Welcome everyone to the planning on this June 7th, 2022. We're happy to have you here with us. We're going to go ahead and start with a pledge. And we're going to have Victoria, did she disappear? Well, there she is. She disappeared again. We'll give her a second to come back on. Are you there, Victoria?
Yeah, it kept kicking me out. Sorry, I am.
That's quite all right. Well, we're going to have you lead us in the pledge. And if everybody could please mute themselves so except for Victoria.
All right. Please place your hand over your heart and let us begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. And can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Carranza.
Definitely.
Commissioner Hughes.
Present.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Here.
Vice Chairperson King.
Here.
Chairperson Van den Eyck.
Yeah.
For the record, Commissioner Anderson and Heath are excused absences, so we have five present and two absent.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
A motion for that.
All second.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Hughes.
Yep.
Vice Chairperson King.
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Chairperson Van den Eyck.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. So we'll move into the public comment portion of the meeting, which is reserved for persons wanting to address the planning commission on any item that is not on the agenda. Please let your Thomas to three minutes and looks like currently have 12 attendees. If anybody would like to make a public comment on anything not on the agenda over which we may have jurisdiction, if you'd like to raise your hand if you're on Zoom or if you are on a phone, starting, we'll raise your hand. Okay, it doesn't look like we have any anything for the public comment portion of the meeting, so we'll go ahead and move into our consent calendar.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. It looks like we actually do have a hand rate.
Okay, Sierra, do we, is this a, I see your hand was raised and we, this is for public comment on something that is not on the agenda. So if you'd like to address this, that's fine.
Um, yeah, I just was in attendance tonight. I did want to express my concern with just how difficult it is to find information even about the planning commission. It has taken me a few months to even attend one of these meetings and that's pretty concerning to me considering I live near off the Aviento where the Del Rio, Rio project is going to be happening. And I have called and tried to get further information. I'm just hoping that tonight I do not have a copy of the agenda as why one was not mailed to me. So yeah, I would just like to encourage and be made aware of how difficult it is to find information of what's going on. I've been asking for information on different activities that will be taking place. Pay to have its pulled so that I can be made aware of what the activities will be going on. And I would just like to involve the community and future planning and what will be going on within literally feet of community members' homes in the future.
Thank you very much for your comments. Are there any other comments? Sierra, so you know that there, there is a way you can sign up to receive email notifications of all city meetings. And the agendas are usually posted, or they are all posted online as well as being available at City Hall. Phil, would you like to comment on that?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I would like to comment on that. I want to really encourage Sierra and others to really reach out to me myself. You can always call me. You can always stop by my office, talk to myself or my planning team anytime. You can also, if you do have, hopefully if you do have internet access, our full agenda packet, all of our information is available right there. If you don't have internet access, if you can get to the library to get internet access, that's the key because these meetings, these planning commission hearings will still be held virtually from now and until the near future because we get greater public participation that way. But our office is always open. Eight to five every day. You can come in with or without an appointment. You can ask to speak directly with me, the Community Development Director, about any of these projects that are coming up in the community, about any issue at large in the community. And I can directly show you how to access all of these agenda items that are on the agenda now, on the agenda in the past, on the agenda in the future. And all of the recordings of these meetings are available on the city's YouTube channel as well. And you can always submit written comments to us if you don't even want to call. We take email comments, handwritten comments. You can stick a note on my window if you want to. You can do whatever you want. But I want to really encourage that because we want to have an open door policy so that I want to, I want to stress that. My number in my office, 805 470 3488. Call me anytime. I'm in a lot of meetings, so I may not answer the phone, but I always try and get back to you, believe me message. Just want to leave it at that. So I'm, I'm really sorry to hear that it feels like it's difficult to get through because that's the last thing we want. You know, I'm really disappointed the meetings have to continue to be virtual, but that's, that's how it is for now. And it's, it seems to be working to actually increase public participation. So that's the good side of it. But I'll leave it at that. And I'm happy to answer any other follow up questions associated with that. Thank you.
Phil, yes, we definitely want people to be aware of our meetings and those I, while we are, while we were talking, I just looked at the city website and went to the planning commission and there is not only a link to our meeting that's live, but also all the minutes and agendas from going back, the current one plus many others going back. So they are available if you have internet access. So thank you very much. Can I get an approval of the consent calendar, please?
It looked like Victoria had a question there, Jeff, but.
Yeah, I did. I just wanted to mention just for Sierra and anyone's sake, where is that, that you could easily find that you could sign up to receive notifications of meetings? Because that, that's definitely helped me for other meetings that I'm not a member of, so.
So I'm, I'm actually looking at it right now. There's, if you go to your officials and there's for commissions, you can go to the commissions and there's a button that says, if you'd like to be notified of upcoming meetings and the agendas are posted, click here. And then you can sign up right there to receive it. So there, I'm sure that's the same on the city councils webpage as well.
Thanks.
Okay, can I get an approval in a second of the consent calendar, please?
Yep, all motion.
Okay.
All second.
Thank you, Tori.
Yes, Commissioner Hughes.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson King.
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza.
I just wanted to abstain because I wasn't at the last meeting.
Okay, Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
And Chairperson Van den Eyck.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero with one extension.
Thank you. All right, we will go ahead and move into the public hearing portion of the meeting for each of the following items. The public will be given the opportunity to speak. After the staff report, the chair will open the public hearing and invite the applicant or applicants represented to make any comments. Members of the public will be invited to provide testimony to the commission following the applicant. Speaker should state their name for the record and can address the commission for three minutes. After all, public comments have been received, the public hearing will be closed and the commission will discuss the item and take appropriate actions. Before we move on to the first item, do we have any disclosures of expertise on this, on item number two? We'll start with Dennis.
No expertise.
Randy?
No expertise.
Sorry.
I just wanted to let you guys know I have a personal relationship with one of, with the designer of this project. We have not discussed this project outside of this meeting, but I just wanted to let everybody know he's a personal friend of mine.
Victoria?
No expert.
Okay. And none for me, except that we did see this at the, our design review committee. So we'll go ahead and turn this over to Steph for their report.
Good evening, commissioners. So this project is the Del Rio Marketplace project. It is actually part of the, let's see, I'm going forward my slides. There we go. It's actually part of the Del Rio specific plan area. So the zoning is general commercial or the general plan designation and the zoning is commercial retail with that specific plan overlay number two, which is the Del Rio Road specific plan. The entire site is about 11.1 acres. So a little bit of history on the Del Rio specific plan. It was approved in 2012. At that point included Walmart on the opposing site, the southeast corner and a large regional retail center in this location. We did go back after Walmart withdrew their application formally and amended the specific plan in 2020. We tried to expand some uses with a focus on retail, some light industrial tourist serving and job centric uses. We did eliminate drive through and high traffic uses to avoid impacts to the 101 interchange. And we, the site has been marketed since then to business park and grocery tenants since about 2020.
Hey Kelly.
Yep.
Is there, your speaker is just a bit funky. I don't know, maybe it sounds a little tunnely. Is there something different about it? I mean, it sounds different than normal. Okay, can everyone hear? Okay, I can hear. Okay, it's just a bit in and out. Okay.
Underwater.
Yeah, that's the way I said.
I don't know how to fix that.
Okay.
Especially when I'm sharing my screen, it doesn't give me many options.
Okay, well, yeah, just, hmm, that's strange. Okay.
All right, all right.
Yeah.
If it gets bad and you need to take over, just let me know.
All right.
All right. So the current application is to establish the master plan of development on the site. There was an original master plan of development for the regional shopping center. And this would have modifications. So that master plan of development does need to be amended. What it does is basically establish building and pad locations, driveway locations and site circulation. It's a large project that doesn't have all of the tenants signed on yet. So some of the building architecture is not completely figured out at this time, but they do have design guidelines that they follow. It does incorporate shared access and parking over all of the sites to make sure that everything works together as one project. And it does need to be approved by the city council per the specific plan standards. There is currently one tenant signed on to the site that is a grocery store tenant as the site anchor. So the project proposes about 3,200 square feet of the grocery anchor tenants. There's about 3,100 square feet of retail and commercial uses throughout the rest of the site. About 18,000 square feet of light industrial potential space and about 31,000 square feet of ground floor office space. And some of the buildings do have a second and third floor for potential residential units or office expansion areas. So this is the master plan of development as it stands today. So you can see there is a entry feature off of the intersection of Del Rio and El Camino Real, but also has some pedestrian accessibility into the site. The project was angled specifically to allow some sightlines coming from the intersection and also to sort of create a more unique space within the development itself. The more northern portion of the development is really sort of designed as one of the major office and light industrial sort of job center areas. There's also an office building here. Both of these types of uses are meant to sort of buffer the larger retail center from the adjacent residential uses. The Valley Fresh Market was also put at an angle which reduces some of the tunnel effect to some of the loading vehicles by giving a little bit more space for sound to sort of travel. The loading dock area is facing this existing drainage basin that was constructed for the new residential development in this location here. And there's a couple of different entries into the site to allow for some site circulation that's a little bit spread out. So we have two entries off of Del Rio Road and two entries off of El Camino Real. This northernmost entry does align with the hotel parking lot to avoid conflicting turning movements as much as possible along El Camino Real. So some of the setbacks that we wanted to highlight on the site plan, this pinch point here to the corner of Valley Fresh Market is about 45 feet away from the property line. The applicants have tried to include some landscape areas to help buffer and they do have some sound walls designed, which we'll get to in a minute. This area here adjacent to the Colony Homes development and its tightest point is about 22 feet setback. And then there's about a 25 foot flag for these rear residential lots. And then there's the Colony Homes development as well. So as I mentioned, the project is designed with an angled plan which provides that sightline. This is a picture, an illustration of what it might look like from the intersection of Del Rio and El Camino Real. And again, it sort of minimizes that grocery loading area in terms of proximity to the rear property line. There's also a lot of drainage features along El Camino Real, which provides for some expanded landscape setback and really sort of some placemaking opportunities along El Camino Real. So this is some of the sound wall information that was included in your staff reports. So currently the specific plan with its old master plan of development design does require some sound walls along the eastern edge of the project. There are some areas that are newer to the plan, which include this drainage basin and some of the office design features which generally have less of a noise component from deliveries and things like that. So the applicant will be doing a noise analysis when they get a hold of an acoustic engineer. It dictates exactly where those sound walls need to go to provide for appropriate sound lessening to the adjacent uses. So they have a couple of different sort of fencing and wall designs to accommodate that noise and to also be sensitive to the character of the neighborhood and not, you know, building large walls where they're not necessarily needed. So that this is included in your staff report in detail, some of the options, some of it, a solid wood fence with some landscape opportunity areas and some of it, a solid block wall where needed for noise attenuation. We also wanted to make sure that the grocery store delivery trucks could make appropriate turning movements into the site and could get to the rear of Valley Fresh without too much maneuvering. So the applicants have provided this truck turning diagram where it shows the delivery trucks. And I think this is one of the larger ones that would come to the market would come off of El Camino Real and be able to make their way to the back of Valley Fresh Market without too many sort of maneuverings and backing up and making three point turns. And then they would continue forward out of the site onto Del Rio Road. So in terms of architectural theme, it is contemporary agrarian, which is consistent with the Del Rio Road specific plan. That includes materials such as wood look siding, board and batten elements, metal roofing, black storefront systems and metal awnings. As I mentioned before, the Valley Fresh building is the most detailed in its design because they do have a tenant at this point. And their other tenants will be, as part of the conditions, will be required to use similar materials, shapes and forms. So this is an example of what some of those other tenants might look like, those other buildings. Again, those are subject to some minor changes depending on what tenants they actually get on the site. So in terms of signage, the most detailed signage we have today is the Valley Fresh Market signage. The maximum allowed for the grocery tenant would be 116 square feet and they are below that at 114 square feet. So they do comply with the Del Rio specific plan. The rest of the signage will also comply with the Del Rio specific plan in terms of size and location. And then they are proposing a center identification sign at the intersection of Del Rio Road and El Camino Real, which would be mounted on an entry trellis type feature that just provides a little bit more place making for the site in general. They also have some freestanding monument signs to allow some of those tenants to have some signage along El Camino Real and Del Rio. So you can see the tenant sign at that first main driveway off El Camino and that first main driveway at Del Rio. Staff has conditioned that the sign meet the, the tasker municipal code sign standards for height of sign. I think the applicants would like to request some additional height this evening and they'll include that in their presentation. So the project does include a mixed use component which will be approved if approved by city council. In the commercial retail zone, in general, we allow 24 units per acre which sets the site at a base residential density of 266 units. We know that residential above certain buildings is not as compatible. And so they're only proposing potential residential units above the office and exchange buildings. I did want to point out there was a typo in the staff report and in the resolution about the number of units. They are requesting up to a potential of 92 units. They do not have the units designed yet. And so making that 92 units does comply with their traffic report and also would allow for more smaller units and more affordable by designing it if residential was the direction they go. They're also open to the option of having some potentially expanded office space on the second and third floors if there's a tenant that needs that much space. So there's also a tentative parcel map included in your recommendation tonight. The site is currently six parcels with a different configuration. So they do have a map to create seven parcels as part of this development and shared parking and access easements will be required over all of those parcels in addition to some drainage easements to allow the, the use of those combined drainage facilities. So we have looked at the specific plan and the project is consistent with the standards of the specific plan in terms of uses, landscape design, shared access and parking, architectural style and materials and the sound wall locations. We did look at some environmental impacts compared to the original EIR and the amended one in 2020 that was circulated. So they did do some additional traffic analysis to make sure that the impacts were not increased from the proposed uses of the development. In the time that we've did the original EIR versus today, the state also changed how traffic analysis is looked at. So it kind of moved from level of service to vehicle miles traveled. We did look at both of those factors, however, in determining if the impacts were increased. And the traffic analysis determined that the traffic impacts were the same or less than previously identified. So the mitigation measures remain the same, but because of how some of the impacts are timed based on cumulative development of the area, we did modify some of those mitigation measures in terms of their timing. So the applicants in this case will pay their fair share towards a lot of the combined improvements. Most of that improvement includes an added right turn lane onto US 101 going northbound on the freeway. So they'll pay their fair share towards that. They will, as part of this project, be required to do a lot of construction at the intersection of Del Rio Road and El Camino to restripe some lanes to increase some width to accommodate that lane restriping and you can move some signals around and provide some new signals. I also wanted to point out that there are a few condition modifications that staff is requesting at this time. Again, we would like to update the residential units to 92, which is consistent with their traffic analysis and will allow some smaller affordable by design units. There's a couple of typos in condition 12, just to make clear. In condition 13, staff's recommending that we add language to allow the easement to be recorded as a document prior to map recording. In case the grocery tenant moves forward before the map records, we still want to make sure that that existing easement is taken care of and remains for the property benefits. There's another typo to fix in 26, just changing internally to externally. Condition number 28, we wanted to replace with this language here about storm water basins. I think we had a condition that they be a maximum depth of five feet, but as Jeff probably knows as an engineer, there's a lot more complication involved in that. So so this condition is replaced with some language that has some information about the maximum slope of the basins so that we don't end up with like a really large deep hole that needs to be fenced. And we believe that this meets the, the intent of what, what staff was recommending from a visual standpoint. And public works condition number 20, we wanted to delete the retention basin section. They don't have any retention basins on the site. They have detention only. So we wanted to make that more clear. A couple of just grammatical errors in public works condition 55 and 59. 659 and 61, we want to make sure we allow for them to bond for some of the things instead of doing them upfront before recordation of the map. We did want to delete public works condition 63 related to my Lars and old Xerox copies of maps for the city. And then we wanted to make sure we fix that numbering because that chart can get a little squirrely on us sometimes. So we are recommending that planning commission adopt the draft resolution to recommend that the city council approve conditional use permit and the tentative parcel map along with the associated EIR addendum for the Del Rio Marketplace project, subject to finding incentive conditions of approval with staff modifications. And so we are available for any questions, should you have any. And I know that the applicant team is also available when we get to that point for any questions.
Dennis? Make sure you unmute yourself. Yeah.
Yeah, just, thank you. Maximum water depth on those, on those bases that you talked about. Is there a requirement about fencing of the basins?
Yeah, so we did require that the basins be designed to be unfenced as a general aesthetic rule. And so I think the condition that is in there has a maximum water depth of two feet.
And that's allowable without offense to feet?
I believe so. I know that Nick DeBar is on the meeting as well.
All right. We did receive a letter from daughter of a mother who lives next door to the project in the Colony Homes area. Could you go back to the slide that has delivery circulation, please? So in the letter that was sent to the commission, there's expression of concern for delivery trucks being able to make it to the marketplace drop off portion without having to back up constantly and have the beeping sound of the backing up truck being there. I was happy. One of my questions was, is circulation plant pattern for deliveries? So is this plan that we're showing here going to be mandated for all deliveries to occur or just a suggestion?
I, the grocery store owner is on the call and he can probably best describe how they deal with deliveries. Obviously, these deliveries are coming from multiple locations that we don't necessarily have control over, but it's my understanding in large commercial centers that there is a delivery path that is followed. And this is all, the delivery drivers know about that ahead of time. I don't want to guarantee that there would never be a truck that had to back up, back up for any reason. But the pattern is designed to allow to minimize that as much as possible and get to the rear of the store in a forward motion.
It is very difficult to, to control, like you were saying. However, is there going to be any scheduling of when deliveries can occur? Are, are the sort of a 24 hour event?
Yeah, I know that the shop owner can, can speak to that. I believe that it's, it's a smaller grocery store, not a larger chain. a smaller grocery store, not a larger chain, so there is some level of control over deliveries. And we have tried to condition that on some projects before and it's very hard for us to control truck routes and truck timing. And so a lot of times, you know, trucks get to the site when they get to the site. And so if they're not allowed to deliver, they sit in the parking lot and idle, and that's been a problem as well. So we have found that a lot of times the the owner of the store has a little bit more control over that than we do.
What recourse do neighbors have if beeping noises become bothersome? Are they able to call the city and and voice complaints or how how do they go about that?
Yeah, so our noise ordinance has some restrictions on louder noises outside of certain daytime hours. And then we also have a section that deals with neighborhood nuisances. So if it becomes enough of a nuisance where multiple neighbors are concerned, even if it doesn't necessarily violate our noise ordinance, there is a process for them to bring that forward to the city. And if there are violations in our noise ordinance, that of course can be brought forward as well. I do know that the developer of the site who plans to to still retain some of the site and the grocery store owner are very receptive to ensuring neighborhood compatibility. And so I know they'll be able to speak a little bit more to that as well when we come on.
And I trust that they do. I I I know I know them through the work that they have done in the past and they do an excellent job of maintaining and their site and being neighborly with with people. It's kind of interesting on this diagram that we have here. Obviously, you can see the how the route goes, but because trucks need larger turning radiuses, you can see like in the first entry at the very bottom, there's a swing to the left that goes across the center line to to make make it into the parking lot. And then there are several turns within the parking lot itself that are dependent on being next to park cars. And we since there's going to be a residential component within this project, is are there going to be assigned parking spaces for people to park? So there would be no obstruction of trucks whenever they deliver. Obviously, people be there twenty four hours a day. In some cases, the the back end of their car, the front end of the car might be sticking out, you know, depending on, you know, especially with big big trucks people have today, they sometimes hardly fit into parking spaces. So in some cases, a delivery might not be able to get past a certain point because of obstruction. So is there going to be anything that deals with the residential parking of the project on the twenty four hour day period?
Sure. So there's not a specific condition at this time. If the commission wanted to recommend a condition, I think that, you know, we could add a condition to have, you know, no, no overnight parking signage or no twenty four hour signage placed on, you know, parking stalls that were part of the the delivery route.
Well, anyway, again, the the letter was written by the daughter of the mother who lives next door. And I just want to make sure that commission is have seen it. I highlighted one spot. It says these vehicles are going to have one heck of a time getting in and out of that back part of the Valley Fresh Market that shows on the site plan as loading at the back of the building. And again, the concern is more of not necessarily the delivery is occurring, but it's more of the trucks moving back and forth, back and forth, and the beeping sound that goes along with that. So thank you.
The other commissioners have any questions? Of staff? Okay, we'd like to invite the applicant or the applicant's representative to address us at this time. And we'll be opening up for public, opening up the public hearing, inviting them to make those comments.
Hi, this is Patty Whelan. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great. I am representing the owner of the project. That's MP NX Clint Pierce is the manager and he's attending the meeting. He's observing this right now. I have to say for us, we're very excited to get this project in front of you. We've been working on this for quite a while. And certainly, this portion, this main commercial center has really been the the final key that we've been wanting to to pull together for you. So as you know, as you're familiar with, this was part of a specific plan that has already been approved and thoroughly reviewed under SEQA and the land use requirements, but something we've been doing for the last, I think it's a couple of years now at least. We've been working to bring a modernized site plan for you. And and Clint is also very happy to be able to bring an anchor store of a very quality market to this, to what we're working with and in developing the rest of this site. So I won't be taking up more of your time because this is primarily a design review as the project is right now. So tonight we have, who will be doing the the main presentation is the lead designer, Scott Martin with R M. We were very pleased with the with the site plan that he came up with and he will be able to go over that in detail with you shortly. We also have an attendance rest of the design team. They are here. They're not planning to speak, but if a specific question comes up that needs their input, they're here. So also with R M, we have Christopher. He's the landscape architect. And our lead civil civil engineer is Susan Roberts with Canon. And she's done a lot of work both for the onsite and the offsite improvements. So we're very familiar with those details as well in working with the city. And I would like to say that we have been working closely with staff to pull this together and and be able to present a project that is meeting what the city is looking for on a site like this. The owner is trying very hard to fulfill, to satisfy what the city is looking for onsite, to have offices and light industrial a mixed use facility that is that really ties together with a pedestrian environment, a lot of features that are designed to attract. And so we hope you can see these values. Scott will be talking more about that. I'm also pleased to say that right following me right now, we have the owners of the Valley Fresh Market. That's Greg and Teresa King. They're attending and Greg would just like to say a few words to you and then we will hand it off to to Scott. So unless there are any questions, please, please bring up Greg King.
Thank you. Greg, if you want to unmute yourself here.
There we are. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, thank you. First, I want to thank you for giving me a minute to talk, sitting here watching the the design I was talking about. It just gets me so excited. Teresa and I are just thrilled to be coming to North County. I met her in North County in nineteen ninety three. Ninety one, I'm sorry. We we lived up there for several years. Her family, can you guys see us too? No, okay. Her family's a multi generation up there, I think seven generations. Her great grandparents lived in Tascadero until their passing, which is in the late nineties. Great people. We spent plenty of time in Tascero recently. We really love what you guys have done with the town. It just it's pretty exciting. Tell you a little bit about the story. If you, you know, this is going to be the fourth grocery store we've opened up in ten years. You may be aware that I'm a part owner in the California Fresh Stores with another couple guys. They didn't want to do any more stores, so we started a new brand, Valley Fresh Market. And so this will be our second Valley Fresh Market. You know, one of the things that we really focus on is community events and just really digging into the community and being part of the community, wanting to help. A couple of things that you we talked about real quick was the flow of the back, the noise, how did talk about complaints or how to address complaints. First of all, anybody who has a complaint that's a neighbor, I'll give them my phone number. I mean, I'll pass it out. They can come in the store and we'll we'll give that. We, the last thing we want to do is upset anybody, you know, with our trucks. So a couple of good things about that issue is that we're not going to have a traditional dock. What what we do now, everybody comes on trucks have these lifts. So it not only makes it quicker, it makes it less noisy. As far as the backing up goes, you know, I can't say like you, somebody had said it. We can't say that won't happen, but for the most part, it won't. We'll have a flow through lane and we'll have a spot, a lane where there's stops spread out. And we don't do anything. I mean, there's one purveyor that comes early in the morning and that's the produce people. There won't be a lot of noise going on back there and we can move those around. Wednesdays and Sundays, we do not receive at all. And I have personal relationships with all of our vendors and I mean CNS is the largest wholesaler in the country. And, you know, I know them all. I know the the president, the vice president, all the the players, they're, you know, they treated me like I'm a big player and we're not. We're a little player. But they always listen to us and they always are ready to help. So I don't know if any of you have been in our stores. We do a mixture of natural, organic and conventional products. We manufacture a lot of products. You know, we our delis are full of food that we cook from scratch, very simple ingredients. And we just, you know, one of the things we do is we put we put boxes everywhere, suggestion boxes where people can go. We 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 make it. We put it on ourselves to answer every one of them and we've been very successful at doing that. San Luis, the San Luis stores are really tough spot in there. And, you know, there's, there's a lot of apartments around there and especially the trucks pulling out and pulling in. We had a lot of trucks were actually pulling in the parking lot and they're not supposed to. So, you know, we have our staff and myself, actually, every time we saw one, we would go up and let them know and then we called their company. So I think that as far as those kind of issues go, we're really going to be able to work with the community. And it certainly is our intention not to upset anybody, but to make them happy. This gal that lives behind the store, you know, one of the things we do, it's been pretty effective, especially through COVID, with a lot of the older folks that didn't want to come in the store. We offer delivery. We do, what's the, we do Instacart now. I mean, I personally delivered hundreds of people's groceries over the years. So you know, we're just really excited to be here. We're really excited to be going up there. We have lots of friends and family up there. And it's just, it's a really exciting project for us. And I will say one more thing. Clint Pierce has been the easiest person I've ever worked with and it's just a pleasure to be working with that guy. So really excited about that too. You guys got any questions for me or?
Well, why don't we have the whole presentation and then we'll get back to asking some.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Chair. This is Scott Martin with R R M Design Group. Can everybody hear me all right?
Yes, thank you.
I'm not sure I'm fully promoted. Oh, there we go. There's a panelist. Hang on. You don't really need to see me, but I really wanted to share my screen. So I appreciate the promotion to to Zoom panelists. I'm going to make sure that I'm able to share my screen and you guys can all see that now. Is there a PDF up? I like the PDF because I get to draw. I'm an architect. That's what I do is I think with my hands. So commissioners, thank you so much for for the time tonight. I really appreciate that. We've already had some feedback from some of you through the DRC process. I think most of you understand where we are in that process and just really excited to sort of take it to the the next step. As Patty said, we have our full team here, so you can barrage us with any any questions or concerns you may have during this. We find, just like going through the DRC process, this is just another opportunity to make the project better. So we look forward to your input and you becoming a vested member of this project. I think staff did a fabulous job with their presentation and I'm going to try to avoid any duplication with ours. I'm going to do a quick site overview, talk about circulation and access. Maybe I can touch upon some public concerns we heard. Some of the site features and why this building is placed that way, why the site is at a forty five degree, what the heck were they doing? The landscape concept that that comes along with it, how we conform to the specific plan. And then just at the end, I'd love to raise some some small considerations with a couple of conditions that the design team is is struggling with. And we want to make sure that that is working out better for the project and the community as a whole. First, to start off the site plan, I don't know which ways northeast, south or west, and it gets so convoluted because we're almost at a true forty five. When you look at El Camino here in Del Rio, it really is north is up in this little key map. So our north is is at a forty five degree angle. That is one random angle that helped delineate the site plan. But then we have this this rather jogged northeasterly property line, and that is the residential buffer that I think has been talked about and was a primary driver throughout the design. There is also residential along the northwesterly property line. And then, as we all know, the busiest street in Tascadero with El Camino Real out front and sort of a emerging Del Rio. I think we've all seen what what may happen south of here, what what some concepts are. I think many of us have been caught in traffic on Del Rio trying to get on and off the freeway. And we know that there's some opportunities to to really enhance that as sort of a northern gateway to our city. And we're excited about being a part of that. We we drew a site, we drew a couple of site plans and shared with Clint Pierce, the developer and Kelly and Phil with the city. And I swear it wasn't cockeyed at the first go around. What we really looked at was was project goals and what we were trying to create. And that was a sense of place and a way to to transition retail to pedestrian, to a to a true mixed use village. A place that offered jobs, potentially housing, flexibility in today's market. I don't know who has the best crystal ball, but I'd love to borrow it because nobody knows what's going on anymore with retail, with office. I'm I have been sitting in my bedroom for two days. So it is a changing world. And I I give any developer right now a lot of credit for moving forward with projects. And ultimately, what I think we're trying to build in is as much character and and community identity while still remaining as flexible as possible for what is a changing market. The big thing here is the anchor. There is a big box and it's right in the middle of the site, the Valley Fresh. Appreciate Greg being here tonight. They had such a great vision for what their project is, being not only an anchor of a shopping center, but the anchor of a community. When you look at our northern piece of Tascadero, we really can be the neighborhood center here. And I I think that that's very important. We wanted to make sure that it felt like a people place, not like a car place. This might be the one of the harder truck turning radiuses to get through, but that's almost on purpose because we didn't want to make it a thorough way. This really wanted to be more about people than about cars. That being said, we really tried to focus that at at the corner, the most public of corners and lead people into the site. We created a very pedestrian environment. We turned retail buildings sideways where where normally they would want as many cars in front of them as possible. We created outdoor space and and common amenity space. We did create a common easy access loop through here and then parking fields off of that, but really focused on pedestrian spines coming through that, breaking the the autocentric nature and and providing more visibility and enhancement for people out of their cars than in the cars. This this center, I think, you know, Greg talked a little bit about his vision of a grocery store. It's more than just a grocery store. There is a deli, there's a coffee, there's a barbecue opportunity. There there there's outdoor patio space. This is, this is the changing, evolving grocery store. Like you said, there's not a loading dock. This is not Costco beep 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 back up. Hopefully, the trucks can pull into here. They, there is a bypass lane and they can, just like you do on the side of the curb, pull right up and then use their lift gates. So we're trying to avoid as much as possible. Part of the other reason for that forty five degree angle on the site is we kept this point where it normally would be on a traditional center, but we rotated this point down. And that creates at at our pinch point, the forty five feet that you typically see in a retail center back of house. But at this point, from residential and surrounding neighbors, we're we're well over two hundred feet. So we really tried to elongate and diversify that rear setback, including elements like sound walls and landscaping and and screening wherever possible. Including elements like sound walls and landscaping and and screening wherever possible. So we're, we're happy with how the site, site laid out. I think the forty five degree angle offers these interesting nooks and crannies that become landscape opportunities, outdoor public space. It's almost like a string of pearls around the project where pedestrians can engage from one to another. Park your car once and enjoy your whole day. We talked a little bit about some of the uses, that the idea with exchange, I know that's a little bit funny, is, is a little bit of the flex funky space. This might be the coffee roaster who also sells you a cup of coffee. It might be the bread baker who can also sell you a loaf of bread. We'd love like a Hush Harbor or a Joe Bella Coffee, something along those lines. There might be a furniture maker who sells a couple of pieces out of the front. But we like the idea of having some second and third story flexibility, whether that's residential, whether that's office. Towards the rear of the site, there would be no ground level residential whatsoever. But opportunities for, for a large office campus or maybe a mixed use facility where there's office on the ground floor and residential above. We think that starts to provide that, that flexibility, that sort of transition into the existing neighborhood. And then the true pure commercial only is really located in the center of the site. Like I said, the corner was really where, where the, the kernel of, of sightlines and pedestrian access and being. Being able to visibly see and physically walk into the site came about. So we really wanted a specimen, beautiful tree, a plate, a people place, a place for people to hang out. We wanted you to see that corner and not see all the cars and we, we felt like that was very, very important to, to the overall site design. This is the other entry on El Camino Real, this is exchange buildings that we talked about, you can see Valley Fresh in the distance. Some of the more traditional commercial as well. Here's a look right into that plaza area on the corner of El Camino and, and Del Rio. We, we had a great specific plan to work with, you, you, you and your staff have done a fabulous job with this sort of. Agrarian industrial look, which we think is going to be beautiful for, for our sort of, we call it the area. So we're excited about bringing a architectural theming that, that is fitting with the specific plan. Right now, we only have one tenant, but it's a big fish, it's the tuna, it's the anchor, it's what will bring other people. So we're really excited about creating, setting a standard and creating quality architecture to, to start to really set the tone. So metal roofing, board and baton siding, a little contemporary but rooted in history. We think that's the, that's the sort of future of Atascadero, we don't want to lose our past, but we don't want to try to mimic and copy it. We want to embrace it, so we're really excited about sort of the, the look that came about. And we think it's something that, that many residents will, will fall right in line with. And we all live here, I live here at least because of our outdoor space and the fact that I put a T-shirt on and go outside right now. So we want to make sure that our, our outdoor spaces are what's attracting people and, and are appropriately designed and accommodating for those people. That's really our, our concept behind the landscaping, whether it be office, whether it be retail, whether it be residential, those outdoor spaces. Excuse me, are, are really important. And that, that, like I said, we started at the corner and then we took that all the way through the project. We think we meet in the entire specific plan conformity. And we're excited about sort of taking what was just a planning document and bringing something to life. And, and bringing a project that we think is very appropriate for the neighborhood and, and the community. As I mentioned, that there are two conditions I, I'd like to at least consider. The first one being condition twenty seven. It's a bit of an odd one for our design team, mainly because of the word ceiling. There's a requirement that the first floor ceiling height of a multi-story building shall be a minimum of fifteen feet. I'm a planner at heart, I love it, the concept is you want a quality base on your building, you want lots of transparency. You want to accommodate uses of all kinds, well, we still want to do that, we want the ability to have. Light industrial, like I said, the coffee roaster, the bread maker, the brewery, whatever it is. But it, it really pushes and hurts our ability to, to define ceiling. Some people don't even, you know, I looked at Hush Harbor today, they have a drop ceiling in this portion, it's only ten feet tall. Now, back here where they bake bread, it goes up to about twelve or fourteen feet. Very similar at Joe Bella. It just li- limits our ability to do mixed use, we're hoping that maybe we can work with staff and come up with a. Minimum second floor height or something that's a little more easy to define. What you can see just in Joe Bella, they have three or four different ceiling heights. So if we put that all at fifteen foot as a minimum, that'd be really hard. It's also, it's just, it's not a code requirement, we're meeting all code requirements, we want to try to stay within that. So we're, we're just, we're trying to main, maintain the flexibility, not add more handcuffs to, to what is a, a changing retail. And, and job centric world. So the other one, you know, I, I live in Atascadero, I know we've dealt with signage clutter for quite some time. And when we looked at the number of potential tenants for here, we thought it was appropriate to ask for us for a height exception on our signs. We, we only have two large monument signs, it's a lot larger center. And it will have a number, you know, it could have offices in the back, it could have a number of different uses. So what's allowed right now is, is this high and, and there are ways we can move this down and, and, and make that work. I, I'm open to the con- conversation, I'd like the idea of keeping it a little bit taller. I think it's important, the less signage opportunity you have, that's, that's purposeful, that's well designed and well thought out. The more opportunity you have for A-frame signs or these little cheap flag things, banner things that people, you know, pick up at, at the local. Print shop, so we're hoping to just get a little bit, bit of, of an exception here. It is asking for a little bit more, but it is clustering all those signs together. So we, we felt like it was appropriate for a project of this size and scale. So anyways, I, I really appreciate your time, I know that's probably way more than you wanted to hear from the applicant side of things. But we do want to offer ourselves for, to ask, answer any questions or, or hear your comments, because we're excited about how to make this even better.
Thank you very much, Scott, we'll go ahead and. Open up to commissioners for questions of the applicant or the applicant's representative. Victoria.
Alright, hi, I was taking some notes here, so just to clarify, Chair. Be directing questions to Scott right now, or Greg, or Patty, or everyone.
It could be any of them.
Okay, got it, well, I guess since Scott was just here presenting, I wanted to ask. Escaping detail and just especially the exchange area and then. Also by the plaza, if there was any consideration of. The fact it's very blazing hot and it will be getting very hotter, much hotter in the summertime and the, the early fall. Around shading and I'm not talking about trees so much as I'm talking about. Pergolas or, you know. Some kind of coverage zones and that kind of thing. And then I was also curious about the opportunity for any kind of light park and recreation structures. Especially in the zones that are supposed to be having some residential. But maybe there's an intended audience that that wouldn't work for, so that was the first question.
Okay, I think that's at least two, but I'll, I'll count it as the first one, Commissioner Carzant, so thank you. Thank you so much for, for your, your detailed review. Let me see if I can't handle this in a, on a couple of different ways. One, absolutely, we, we all, or I live here, I understand what it's like to be outside in, in these temperatures. And we want to make sure we're providing pedestrian shading. That, that's done through, through a variety of different ways, actually on the corner plaza, we do have a trellis. So that was really important to provide some, some sort of transparency, but also some shading as well. The buildings have canopies beyond not only that, the, the roof pitch, but there's also canopies. And then we envision tables with umbrellas and, and sort of site furnishing as well as some large, large box trees. To, to sort of fill it that in. You mentioned specifically the plaza and exchange, you know, I think you'll see if you look at our landscape plan, we are trying to provide. Good sized trees throughout the project that would help sort of alleviate a lot of that hardscape area. I'll also say there's, there's, you know, there's this heat island effect. And the more, you know, we chose to actually have basins and see that landscaping and see the, the, that water treatment. And I think that goes a long way towards just less parking and asphalt and burning of our world. I think your second question, I hope that answered that, my landscape architects here and he hasn't yelled at me for anything. He does say they are evergreen for, for shading. And that we, there could, there's a building that does have a trellis against it as well, said my project manager, so. Hopefully that helps, the other portion that, that I think you asked was about sort of outdoor amenity space, if there was residential. The both of the office areas have outdoor space planned. They're not detailed to the level of the retail one, because we don't quite know. If it's a hundred percent office, it's probably going to be outdoor lunch areas, a place for, for that sort of thing. Yeah, thank you Kelly, but if there is residential above, depending on whether it, it could be a senior residential. And that may again take on a much different outdoor environment than would say a family project. And, and so, so we're kind of weighing those options. You'll notice that each of the outdoor spaces for the, for the office buildings. Are oriented in a way where, where they're a little more private, that they receive a little less sun, they're on the, the sunny side of the, or the shady side of the building. North light, quality outdoor space and, and a, a little away from the retail space, if, if that makes sense.
Okay, yeah, I mean, you answered quite a bit and it seems to me that so far, just with the shading, I mean, trees are great. Especially though for seating and just lunching. It seems like it's dependent on Greg and his staff, whether or not they're going to be able to get the umbrellas up and on during open hours and closing hours. So it's, it's more dependent on that versus like a fixed, you know, shade sales and things like that. The trellis though, I love that fixed structure, so thank you for. Question about the, I think Greg.
Hey Victoria, you're cutting in and out, we can't quite hear you, sometimes you cut in. We still can't hear you, Victoria.
Victoria, not that my audio is much better tonight, but if you want to text me your comments, I'm happy to pass those along as well.
While we're waiting for Victoria to. Yeah, it's not resolving your issue, so we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and. Let's pause on you, Victoria.
Yeah, the questions, this big questions for Scott. You had mentioned at the very beginning. Conditions of concern, the plural conditions, I didn't hear a lot of expression about. Conditions in your presentation, are there others besides the sign that you spoke about?
Thank you Commissioner Smith, there, there are two, so maybe I was overzealous there, there are only the two. The sign, we're hoping to get a three foot exception on what is allowed to be twelve feet to go to fifteen feet. And then it's the first floor ceiling height, that is, that is also it, in your conditions of approval. I'm trying to roll down to the number. You know, I feel very confident that we're gonna get somewhere with staff, but I, I'm, I'm struggling with the ceiling portion of that condition. And the fifteen foot number.
Yeah, you did bring that up when you were talking about Joe Bella and Hush Harbor, Hush Harbor. Sorry about not catching that. My next question has to go to Greg and has to do more with, he talked about being part of the community. Obviously 4H events and our fair events that we have. Is there any plans about helping out and participating in those?
Oh, there I am, are you, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. We have in the past, we've always tried to, first of all, I, I assume you mean by buying animals. That, that's one assumption I have, the other, you know, and that, that can be tough for us. We've tried to buy a couple every year, but aside from that. We give to every, anybody who comes to the store and says, hey, we have this going on the school or with 4H or with my church. Or whatever it is, we participate in everything and we do that with pleasure, I mean, that really is what makes us part of the community. So the answer to that question is one hundred percent. As far as buying animals, that's been tough for us over the years. Like I said, we try to buy one or two every year. With our new solving store, it's been, it's been a tough go in that store, we are doing well now, but, well, plus COVID, I guess. We weren't able to buy any the last couple of years.
Concerned about the purchasing of animals, it's just more support for kids. For instance, we have a robotics group at our high school, it's very, very good and very active. And they're always looking for ways of not only in receiving directed donations. But giving the ability of raising money their own and if there's any way which they could come up with some idea then. And bring it forward to you would be something that you could be acceptable if done the right way.
We've done car washes, we've done bake sales. Yeah, we've done, we pretty much, we don't turn anybody down and we do that with pleasure, that, that what's, that, like I said, that's what makes us part of the community. And that's how you get to know people. And after I've been in a, a place for a couple of years, I get like the same people calling me, hey, it's time again, you know, that kind of thing. AYSO, 4H, the Boyd Scouts, the Girl Scouts, all of that kind of thing. Oh yeah, we did, we, we've done a, a few, Make-A-Wish Foundation. We're always up for something, it, it, it makes us part of the community, it makes us feel good. It really, you know, there's nothing, there's not a better feeling that I've ever had than giving. And, you know, we try to make a difference wherever we go. I think, I think the community would be quite happy with what we bring and like I said, I pass myself one out to everybody. I'm not that hard to get a hold of. And one more thing, we do plan on doing indoor and outdoor seating. We have, we do it in, one, well, just this store, I guess, is the, just here in solving where we, we do set up tables every day. We bring in the, the umbrellas, we leave the tables out. But. So I hope that answered the question.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Guys, hear me? Well, earlier we were talking about signage and whether or not it was even needed to do something that said. No overnight parking, I was just curious, how did that sit with Greg? And if that would even be something that would be appropriate or beneficial?
You know, I know that Walmart has done that for years and my family, we would go camping. And to drive long distances, we'd stay in the parking lots overnight because they were allowed. I don't really, I, I, I mean, I want to do everything to help the community. We will have the, the apartment buildings there and, you know, people that live there, I think would probably. You know, I don't, I don't know that question, I don't know how to answer that, I'm always willing to look and rethink an idea, that's what I'll say about it.
Yeah, it sounded like a traffic for just the, the people coming to drop off things in the back, that, that trafficked area. But not every parking space.
Oh, are you asking me if I'll have? Repeat the question if you would, please.
Yeah, we were considering earlier, I think right when Patty, right before her, we were looking at whether or not signage would be. Appropriate, I think Kelly brought it up around no overnight parking and the certain trafficked area that the people dropping off. Produce, food, you know, whatever in the back of your store.
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate for sure to have that.
Okay. Okay, great, I highlighted that then. But you did say no Wednesday or Sundays or deliveries at all.
We don't do Wednesday, so Teresa said to me too, she go, you know, you should tell them our receiving hours. Really, we die off our receiving hours about noon and we'll have some stragglers come in, but. Yeah, usually, usually our receiving hours are six to three, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, no, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. We don't receive on Wednesdays or Sundays. And it usually dies off fairly early, I mean, there's some heavier days, you know, coming into the weekend, Friday usually might be a little busier. You know, the last two years was really a struggle getting groceries. You know, the last two years was really a struggle uh getting groceries at all. So we really loosened our rules back then uh because of the COVID in the and the the supply chain. So, you know. Not foreseeing anything like that in our future, I think that the neighbors are going to be pretty happy with us. And like I said, they come in the store and if if there's something that bothered them, I will do everything I can to to fix that. Obviously, we have to receive groceries. But like I said, I have I have personal relationships with all of our vendors and they're pretty easy to work with.
Yeah, that's great. And I just wanted to say um that I was just in the Pismo store um because I needed to grab something quick. I was working for a client that lived up the hill there on James Way in Pismo and. Needed to go down there and I had a meal that I got. I sat down at the seating. One thing that we, Emily and I used when we were going to the beach, we decided to get some quick groceries there for a picnic. And um, you know, if there was extended little grass areas for people to just sit on rather than use the the seating that are the metal. It it creates a little bit more of a space to like let your kids crawl around on the ground and not be on the concrete. So I just want to add that.
I've said out there many times.
But I I do appreciate all the different that you have there. So thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. That means a lot.
Yeah, me too, myself. It looks like Clint Pierce has joined us and I'd like to give him an opportunity to speak as well.
Thank you, uh, uh, commissioners and uh really appreciate you listening and uh hearing our project tonight. I just wanted to speak quickly about the uh the parking that's um that was asked about, the overnight parking. Um, so I want to add just two kind of uh general things. One is we manage all of our own properties and nothing's done through an algorithm. It's all, um, we have a seven day a week uh security um during the day and night patrols. So we keep a a clean and safe property. We uh will commit to that because that's really important to our business. And another thing is if it becomes necessary, we have no problem at all on strategic or certain parking spaces uh saying. You know, signing those saying no um residential parking and no overnight parking. So if we have some pinch points where uh we really feel like a few spaces need to be blocked out at night, absolutely, we can do that.
Great, thank you, Clint.
Eric, there's not any other very specific questions from uh clarification from the commission? It'd be good to move on to the public comment before there's much more deliberation unless there's specific items that need clarifying. On the project.
Agreed. Is there any other um clarification questions for from the commissioners? Okay, then we will go ahead and open it up to our uh to the public. If you would like to um make any comments, you can please state your name for the record and limit your comments to three minutes. You can raise your hands using the raised hand function if you are on Zoom or if you're on the phone, you can press star nine. Let's see. So it looks like we have uh one commenter right now. Sierra, if you'd like to go ahead.
Um, yeah, is there any way it can be granted camera access? Um, I'm not sure, Bella. There's specific rules on camera access?
No, there's, there's not. Uh, we we can give her camera access. If we if we have that ability, let's do that. There's no um. Specific rule on that. The only rule is going to be still is one thing, when the time she starts, just that three minutes, so.
Okay, I think you should be able to turn your camera on now, Sierra.
Let's see, is it? You can?
Yes.
Okay, I can't see me, but I'm sorry. I just wanted to put a face with my name. I am a resident on Via Viento. Um, I personally, um, I feel obligated to share a little bit about about myself now that everyone else has introduced himself. Um, I'm a granddaughter of a Danish immigrant. I moved here when I was six, grew up, joined the military, um, traveled the world, saw everything, did what I needed. Decided to start a family and came back to my hometown of Atascadero. Um, I bought a home here. I love Valley Fresh. I was so excited that they are going to be moving in my backyard. Um, I go to their Stanley's location, so I don't have to drive all the way to solving from Adisipulsa. Like, I've been defending it. Um, like I said, I'm excited for the entire Valley Fresh idea. However, um, multiple people tonight have said that they started with the corner and took over from there. And that is exactly what has happened. And unfortunately, it is now encroaching on me and my property, my life, my family and my livelihood. As you can see, I have a beautiful view right here in my backyard. This tree, that will literally be less than fifty-five feet from my house, my bedroom windows, everything. Is having a proposed three-story building. The removal of these trees, I have so many concerns. Um, the build projects have already become a nuisance. I'm not normally a litigious person, but I can go there and I do not want to. I'm just asking the board tonight to not move forward with any more progress on this project. Until the actual members of the community that are directly involved in this will be informed enough to make decisions. I recently spent thirty thousand dollars on solar. That's now going to be affected due to the height of these buildings. They're being proposed on the northwest side. I have complete issues with everything with the addition of this last parcel. And I'm just begging you to reconsider until more information can be had for the members.
Thank you, Sierra. Um, any other attendees have any questions? Would like to make any comments?
If I'm able to ask direct questions to the builders, I mean, I do have. A lot of questions like about the sound wall and why it was removed when the state's code states that it needs to be six feet tall on the higher side. I know it's going to be recessed. There's already a lot of code violations from the minimal plans I've found. I would just like information and things to be done as are said and not continued to be swept away in a big whirlwind of amazing growth for Atascadero, which we desperately need. But we need to do it cautiously and what's good for everyone.
Okay, thank you, Sierra. Um, I think your time is uh gone. Maybe we can ask the. Scott, was there, were there any sound walls that were proposed originally for this project?
Uh, you know, there are still sound walls along the the eastern portion of the project where the where the heavy truck, truck traffic is is considered. Um, I didn't realize at first who Sierra was. I I think uh she's reached out in the past to to staff and we. We we've made sure we've done a a little uh solar study to make sure that we're not blocking her new uh solar panels. Uh, I want to be very clear that between that uh Via Vento and there is a, there's actually another finger lot and access lot up to. Uh, the house up towards Marisol. Um, and then there, there's also our property setback as well. So there there's not a proposed sound wall along that area. There is some proposed landscaping and fencing. Um, and it is setback quite a, quite a bit in that that area. So um, but no, no chairperson that that there's not a. To my knowledge, Patty, I don't know if you know that there was never a sound wall proposed there.
Okay. Thank you. I just lost my view of. Participants here, let's see. Are there any other attendees that would like to uh speak? If you can, if you could raise your hand. Okay, doesn't seem like there are any, so we'll bring it back to the planning commissioners. We'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to the planning commissioners for discussion.
Sorry, I had some questions for staff.
Okay, go ahead.
Um. Sorry, now I have to remember them. My family's all here and they're very distracting. Okay, so um. If we, if we approve this project, do the office buildings and other side buildings besides Valley Fresh? Will they have to be these shapes or will they just fit into the parcels as the parcel map designs as designates?
I can't turn my camera back on. Um, uh, there is some flexibility, obviously, um, when they have tenants, they will likely build these to suit unless they do them. Um, you know, as 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 buildings to market before they have tenants. Um, they will be sort of roughly these shapes because the uh outdoor space is important um for that office. If there's some residential component or even if there's office. Um, and the pads are only so big to accommodate buildings. So they have to sort of. Include all the key components that are showed on the master plan of development. Uh, but obviously there are some minor adjustments that can be made based on tenants. Um, for certain jogs in the building or something that might add to the uh architectural interest. Um, so you know, I've never want to use the word exact, um, but. The office one couldn't, you know, take up that whole pad because there is a component of outdoor space. Um, that's part of the master plan.
But when you look at the whole, all that's into this site plan on all the engineering, all the circulation, all the drainage, all the parking. And all the details that go into it, it kind of sets the form pretty tight to what's proposed, except.
Basically, every, like all the outdoor space, all the roads, all the parking will all be built. And then the places where the buildings will go will just sit until somebody.
Yeah.
Unless, unless the developer decides to just go ahead and build the building.
And he may do some of that.
Okay, yeah, so this outdoor space might be built, not built all at once. There might be some, you know, portions of parking that are not built if they're not needed yet. Because it is very hard to construct a building as an island in the middle of a complete improvements. Right, you know, but in general, they will need to meet all of sort of the parameters of the master plan, which includes some of those open space and landscape areas.
Okay, I feel like that was my like new question of the night. So just in case anybody else wanted to know that question, I'm happy to take that bullet. Um. Oh, oh, my gosh, my other question was, oh, what was the thought process behind the fifteen-foot ceilings? Because I I do kind of agree with Scott that that seems weird.
Well, let me, let me first respond. Kelly will respond to that as well, but let's step back a little bit. I mean, first of all, let's just talk about the overall picture for this site. The city has been prioritizing this site as a commercial site in Atascadero. In fact, one of the very last flat, large commercial sites. Yeah, that we've had on our general plan over the last twenty-five years. Um, even though the specific plan came in later, not until twenty-twelve. Prior to that, it was still a commercial site that was barely, very highly prioritized. Um, as supporting uh jobs and supporting head of household jobs, as supporting future retail and those uses. So given that, and given that we know that most of the commercial land uses we want do need a higher ceiling, especially when you look at. Light industrial, you look at um shipping, receiving, you look at those kinds of uses, that is what they need. And I I don't think we're saying, oh, my gosh, it has to be fifteen foot or that's it. I think the idea of having an average and having some variability, I as Scott Martin was mentioning, is probably a good approach. But our our reasoning behind it is that that the site is a commercial zone site. We realize that residential and mixed use is being proposed here and it is something that's conditionally allowed. And it is something we can look at through the master plan. But we wanted to really instate that the priority here is commercial and the priority priority is to retain. Some of these light industrial or office spaces that that have that. And so kind of a little bit of what we call form-based design that we're we're talking about here. But in that, you know, perhaps we can think of a creative way to have some flexibility. We want flexibility. And I think Scott used the word handcuff. We don't want to handcuff this development. We really respect the design as it's coming along. We really respect, I think, what Clint's doing with this property and really happy that Valley Fresh is here as a tenant. Um, we want to embrace all of that, but that's that's the original thought behind it. And Kelly, I'm sure she's got another thought to add to that.
Yeah, so I think, you know, this is number one, staff's biggest concern for making sure that we have some taller first floor opportunities are on the exchange buildings. Because those are the ones that are sort of targeted towards sort of that light industrial um type user. When you look at the minimum height needed for like a small field brewery, um, you know, coffee roaster, even, you know, baker, because they have a lot more mechanical equipment that needs to happen in that space. Uh, you know, it really is sort of twelve to fifteen feet to meet that equipment need. Um, I don't think the intent of the condition was that you couldn't have a drop ceiling um associated with that. And so we can definitely, um, if you recommend that work on wording, um, with the team before we hit city council. Um, staff's a little bit less concerned about the lower floor on the office buildings, although obviously we still want those to remain very commercial in appearance. Um, and so, um, and you know, at planning commission's direction, we can work on a revised condition. We could focus that condition on the exchange buildings rather than the office buildings. Um, you know, we we have some some flexibility in how we could do that. Uh, but we do, you know, want to ensure that those exchange buildings retain the opportunity for uh the types of uses that are envisioned there.
Okay, that that makes total sense. So I'm wondering what would, what would the impact be of changing the wording to? The second floor being a minimum height of fifteen feet instead of the ceiling being fifteen feet, like putting. Would would that impact it significantly?
I don't think so. It would be a minimum second floor height of sixteen feet to allow that framing to occur.
Sure.
Above that fifteen foot. Um, I think that um that sounds just as fine as the condition that's in there. And then the recommendation, if if that's part of it, uh, you know, could have a little bit of discussion about the intent. So if we found a better wording, we could present that to council as well.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so. So, uh, yeah, I want to do that, recommend that change. All that stuff we just said, just put it into like a thing.
Yeah, when the recommendation comes around, around.
Right, 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 yes. Um, and I also do think that one of the first things I noticed on this plan was the. Uh, less car-centric approach of it. Um. Every time I go to the Target parking lot, I'm just like, ugh, now I have to drive from Michael's to Target. This is so annoying. So I really like the fact that you could park anywhere in here and walk to the other stuff. And it's also really close to my new house and I'm really excited about it, so. Okay, I'm done. Next.
Thanks, Tori. Randy.
Okay, I have a few questions. Uh, first would either be for the applicant or their architect. Um, they briefly mentioned that they had done some solar studies to make sure that they weren't in conflict with um the solar of the neighbor. And I didn't hear if they said what their studies were. I just wanted on record like what they're, what they're stating their studies were conclusively one way or the other. So that's Scott.
Is that okay if I answer, Kelly? I know we're kind of, okay, just checking. Didn't want to break a rule. Um, uh, thank you, Commissioner Hughes. Yeah, I, we, we heard that there might be concerns uh of some neighbors along that street. You know, Google Earth allows probably way more snooping than any of us should ever be allowed. But you could see who who had new solar panels placed on it. And I love my solar panels. I totally understand the concern. So so what we did, uh, if you look on site right now, where right where Exchange One is, that that's our building that's closest to to potentially causing any impact. And then uh the solar panels we saw with with the uh closest adjacency were right above section B, where it's called out section B. That there's a house there that that looks like they just recently added added solar. So, um, you know, with today's software, we're able to extrude volumes. Um, in fact, all the sketches you see, we don't actually sketch anymore. It's all computer simulated anyways. And then we can geo-reference those in in real world and see where shadows would fall when. Um, us, we had to make some assumptions. I I don't know the exact topography of the neighbor and I don't know if they have an eight-foot plate or a nine-foot plate on their home. But um what we saw was uh very limited to none, actual shadows being cast on the so on solar panels. In fact, that tree that she mentioned may do just as much, um, just because uh of the the solar position and and the time of day. Um, just because of, of the, the solar position and, and the time of day. So the longest shadows that you get are in the morning and in the evening. Uh, that, that resident actually happens to be due, due north of where we're at. So you're, you're not getting very long shadows because it's, it's mainly cast at midday. Uh, the winter shadow would be the most, but, um, we, we determined that, you know, it with a rough computer model, it wouldn't even climb up the wall. So we felt pretty confident we'd be able to avoid that. We kind of, uh, talked that through with staff a little bit, that, that we, we think we're not infringing on anybody's solar rights.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure that we have our due diligence. I mean, if your zone unable to do something, you are, and it's up until whether it affects another person in that way, but it looks like you guys have done your due diligence. I just, you had referenced it earlier. And I wanted to make sure that, uh, you know, that I understood, that interpreted.
Um, let's, I'll, I'll just throw it out there, because, uh, you made me squirrel. But, um, it's, it's an interesting concept, right? Like, do we have rights to solar forever? And, and, you know, we do a lot of housing that, that is needed for, for all kinds of people when we, you know. Um, anything built next year is going to require solar panels. So how do we do that? And, and still maintain that, that access for everybody? It's in, it's important to us and we're, we're happy to continue to, to get more detailed studies as needed.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to hear that. I mean, there's lots of topics like curtilage is one, like in law, where those laws had to develop over time as technologies came out, things changed. I just wanted to make sure that, I mean, you had referenced it and I kind of figured you guys probably would have some software or something where you could emulate the shadows. I just didn't know where their property was at. And it looks like if it's more on the north side, that I, I could see the trajectory wouldn't be as dramatic. Um, but you answered my question there, so thank you so much for that. Um, I had one other question. Um, I know we brought in, uh, about the fifteen foot, uh, ceilings. And I know that it doesn't look like there's a full set on, you know, what type of tents are necessarily moving in. I mean, we have a loose idea. And we're, and we have like the big anchor there. And I, are you guys by any chance going to be trying to curtail things to like commercial industry, restaurants? Anything that would require like draft footing, fire suppression systems?
Um, I, Clint, I don't know if you want to field that one. Um, that get, you know, grease traps drafted, that, that gets a little more complex with, um, that with multi-tenant buildings. So I want to be a little cautious about that. That, that being said, I have to assume that if the right tenant made the right pitch and it worked from a financial standpoint and compatibility standpoint and parking standpoint, we, we could find a way to, I, that's the kind of flexibility we're ultimately looking for still. Um, so nothing, nothing committed, um, but I would anticipate most of that, uh, Commissioner Hughes to be in either retail one, two, three, or four. Those are much more standard restaurant type of buildings. This is really geared for, Exchange Two even has roll-up doors on the backhand side. Like you might take your pickup bin and unload the wood to build a something. I don't know. It's, it's a little, it's geared a little differently, but there are accommodations for that elsewhere on site that doesn't have potential a second floor above.
Yeah, and, and the reason I ask that is because the fifteen, uh, foot rec, uh, recommendation there, it does make a lot of sense because like, uh, coffee roasting and stuff, I, I've worked on those. And like, when you're dealing with that, I mean, you'd be talking about three, four feet easy from, you know, the ceiling of trying to, you know, tack all these things in. But it looks like you guys are trying to be flexible and you're kind of more directing those people towards other parts of the project. I just, I want to make sure that I understand kind of the flow of how these things are gonna roll out, you know? So, thank you for answering everything. Uh, my questions are good now.
Yes.
Um, I'd like to follow up on two things that both, uh, uh, have been discussed by Tori and Randy, and that is the fifteen foot height. Ceiling. And I just want to note that especially when you're dealing with residences and stuff, you're talking about having live loads above. Um, construction demands will going to change quite a bit when you hire, higher you go, the more expensive it gets normally. So I just want us to be aware of that, uh, sometimes pushing ceilings up is going to cost more for, for things to occur. And then lastly, um, Tori had talked about the development of the project and how it was going to come to fruition. Is there, or has there been a development, uh, scheme provided to the city as to when uh, the developer figures that this project's going to build out completely? Or, uh, what kind of concerns me is there, there's a lot of discussion during the presentation about COVID and things that were out of their control. And so that, that applies to the development of the project, the overall development of the project. Whereas, uh, we have some development areas in the city in which we have had empty lots within a planned development area that just have been sitting there for quite a while because the time hasn't been right. Uh, so has there been any discussion with the property owner developer as to, uh, when they think this will build, build out?
Or we haven't had, um, specific timing discussions on, on full build out of the project. Um, again, um, they're waiting for tenant interest in some of those buildings, um, before, you know, they commit to some, uh, design work that gets done. Uh, we do know Valley Fresh Market, um, is sort of on a fast track to move forward. And that will come with a lot of parking lot design and frontage improvement design. Um, so at least to kind of get that out of the way. Um, I, I know, um, if Jeff wants to open it up to Clint, he, he might have, um, more of an idea of the construction schedule. Um, of course, you know, not having a crystal ball, but having an idea of what he was thinking for that.
Yeah, I would hate to see Valley Fresh sitting there by itself for a long time. Um, and that's why I'm kind of asking about the others. I mean, is there any type of, uh, when you're dealing with retail one, two, three, and four, of some type of synergy? Uh, that Valley Fresh is going to need to draw people into that besides themselves.
So am I on? Looks like, looks like I am. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Schmidt. That was a great question and, uh, very relevant, uh, in, uh, today's development world. Um, so right now, our, if you call it, um, you know, kind of first phase of a development is going to be the, the on and off site. Um, excluding some of these areas around office one, two, and, um, retails one, two, three, and four. Uh, but the first phase of development is going to be Valley Fresh Market. In fact, we're, um, racing the clock to get them in absolutely as fast as possible. And we're also building out retail five, um, at the same time. And we're building out Exchange One and Two. Those will all be included in, uh, what you could call the first phase of development. And, uh, they won't be all opening at the, on the same day. Valley Fresh will probably be the first, followed by the others. But we made a commitment to, um, to the Kings early on that they wouldn't have the situation they had over at, uh, in, in San Luis Obispo at the Foothill Plaza, where they're in the back of the site. They're the first to open and then it's a, um, it's a disaster as far as a construction zone for the next two years. We wanted to get everything as much as we could, um, built out. Um, fully landscaped and beautiful and usable, uh, so that their world is great. And, and isn't affected by other things we do. Now, um, we do not like to build any more spec than we have to, especially when it comes to retail. The anticipation is, as soon as Valley Fresh opens, maybe even before they open, but as soon as they open, there's going to be a lot of, um, uh, interest, a lot of folks coming to visit them and, and patronize their store. That drives tenant interest. So you're going to get everyone from, uh, national tenants to, uh, local nail salons and, uh, barbers and, um, and, uh, financial advisors and everybody in between that are going to ask to be in there because everybody loves, uh, those frequent trips. And the typical shopper, and Greg could tell you this better than I, but it's, it's about, you know, uh, once or twice a week, you have, uh, that's why grocery anchored centers, uh, usually are successful and usually stay full with their other surrounding buildings. Because you have all those great trips. So that's phase one. And, and then two with the, with the retail. And then lastly, it's going to be off, office one and two, unless someone comes forward. Um, my, uh, best guess, as I sit here today, is we will be built out in five years. Uh, but the Valley Fresh, we're hoping to have them open late next year or early twenty twenty-four.
And then to follow up, Clint, um, as you had mentioned, national chains. I mean, there are people within our community that have been searching for and wanting certain national chain type restaurants. Um, you're not adverse to having those possibly within this project, man?
Absolutely not. In fact, I wanted to bring something else up too, as far as development, timing. Uh, we opened our Home Two Suites, uh, hotel across the street in the middle of the pandemic. So that wasn't a great time to open a hotel, but, um, we were full steam ahead and, uh, we're very proud of it. And it's doing well, didn't do well that first year in twenty twenty, but it's doing well now. And, um, so we, um, you know, we've, we've put our plan in place to where we can execute on this plan and get Valley Fresh and these other buildings open. Uh, I also want to mention, we have a development on the corner of Del Rio, El Camino and one oh one, where we have a, um, a lease with Taco Bell. So there's a, a nice chain. I know there's another Taco Bell in town, but they're going to do really well there on the corner, I think. And then we've got a retail building, we've just poured the slab back behind. And we'll likely get a national or regional tenant or two in that building as well. So we love a mix of local, regional, and national. We feel like that really works well. Because, um, you know, the local folks, you know, Exchange One and Two, uh, Scott kind of talked to this and Commissioner Hughes did too, I think. You know, that, and we envision more of an artisanal space. Uh, I don't know if it's a furniture maker with his wooden's pickup, but that's all, that's someone we could envision, uh, being in there. Or, or a brewer, someone, someone like that. We probably won't go with the coffee house because Valley Fresh will have a wonderful uh, coffee house inside their market. But, um, in a way, I'm, I'm rattling on, but that's, that's kind of the, um, the vision for the center as far as the, the more retail end of it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Great. Um, any other questions from commissioners? We, we didn't really discuss the, the signage height. Uh, Kelly, do you want to address that? The idea of, uh, of a taller sign?
Yeah, so, um, I believe the proposal was just over twenty feet, um, maybe. Um, to the sort of the top of the architectural feature, um, of the signage. They have a rock base that's, uh, five feet tall. You know, it, it's really hard with signage and it's a, it's a balancing act. Um, I don't know that we feel extremely strongly either way. Um, as Scott mentioned, if you provide more signage space on your sign, you have potentially less banners, flags and A-frame signs that clutter the sidewalk and areas around the commercial area. Um, of course, we don't want to be hyper overwhelming either and, you know, creating sort of an eyesore. Um, the, the tenant signage locations are, are right against sort of El Camino, you know, across the street from uh, the gas station and Taco Bell area. Um, and, and, you know, on Del Rio, but closer to El Camino across from where Del Rio Ranch is. So, um, I don't know that we have, you know, too much conflict, uh, with neighborhood. Um, the, the signage at the northernmost driveway on El Camino will be a smaller, um, sort of just center identification sign. Maybe have one of the more major office tenants or exchange tenants that there's somebody like that there. Um, you know, definitely identify that driveway for delivery so nobody makes a mistake in terms to a residential driveway. Um, we certainly can consider, um, if you wanted to recommend, you know, a taller sign. I know R M has probably put some thought into, uh, the design and, and the height and how many tenants, uh, you know, could realistically be in the center. And how many could realistically fit on a sign and still be readable? Um, so we're open to, um, you know, a taller sign if, if the commission thinks that that's appropriate.
I will add too, that it does feel like there's too many tenants on this sign and that's a lot to read from the street. And I think our biggest concern is, is the sign legible? At, you know, from traffic at driving speed? And is it designed appropriately at the same time? And those are kind of conflicting kind of things. We don't want it to be too big and too oppressive, but we don't want it to be illegible either. And I, I think those tenant signs at the bottom, for example, might be too small. And if you just chose the major tenants to be on there, you know, that might be something to look at. That man, I think their standing is about seven and a half feet tall. He's a big guy. Um, but I don't think it's the overall size of the thing that's that concerning. It, does it work? Does it fit the design? And does it accommodate the signage that's needed? That's the most important thing. I, I think Scott was right. If you don't have it work, if it signage doesn't work, people do all kinds of wacky things and then it's even messier. And we're chasing those things all the time in the city. So we don't want that either.
Okay. Um, yeah, I mean, my, my thought is, is that we make the recommendation to the council that they, they consider a taller, the taller sign. So would anybody like to make a motion on this item? Any further discussion? If no, nobody wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Okay, so I move that the planning commission adopt draft PC resolution approving a conditional use permit amendment tentative parcel map. AT two, two, zero, zero, one, one, and E I R addendum for the Del Rio marketplace. Subject to findings and conditions of approval with staff modifications. And a modification to condition number twenty-seven regarding the ceiling height of fifteen feet, change it to, uh, second floor, be a minimum of sixteen feet tall or other wording that staff approves of to make sure that uh, the flexibility stays in there. And also recommend to city council that they approve a bigger sign.
I'll second that.
Thank you. And that, can we get a real call, please?
Yes. Vice Chairperson King?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
And Chairperson Van den Eyck?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commission.
Good luck with, uh, the city council.
Great presentation, Scott.
It was, it was great work. Thank you very much. Okay, well, we're gonna, we're gonna keep on, actually, can we take a five-minute break? Uh, let's take a five-minute break. We will reconvene here at seven forty-eight. So will we be convened at seven fifty-five? While we were, will continue our meeting and we'll just put it on pause for right now.
Meeting ID followed by pound.
It looks like it's 7:55. Do we have our staff in the background somewhere?
I'm here.
Okay.
I'm just hiding out right here.
Okay, great.
Yes.
Why don't we turn the time over to Phil for our community development staff report?
All right, let's talk about accessory dwelling units and Senate Bill nine units and I wish our other commissioner could be a part of this discussion, Dennis Schmidt, but he's got a little bit of a conflict. He's working on an SB nine project right now. So he's got to recuse himself, but he can listen in. And just be in the background, but he just can't say anything. So if you want to have any last minute comments, Dennis?
I was just trying to dial in on my phone. It's asking me for a meeting ID. This kind of follows up with what Sierra was saying.
Technical difficulties.
Yeah, so I can dial in, but I don't have a meeting ID.
I think.
On your agenda.
On the agenda.
On the front page?
Yes.
So that's eight, three, two, five, oh, two, three.
Yeah, Dennis, you're also welcome to stay on and we can just move you over as an attendee and you can stay on your computer.
Well, you could, you can stay on either way. You just have to turn your camera off.
And my video off, correct?
No, you, you can have, you can stay on. Just turn off your video and your sound. And just be there. How does that sound? All right. Uh, thank you. So can you see my screen? Just making sure.
Yes, we can.
All right, good deal. All right, it's a bit of a long-winded discussion tonight, so I'm going to ask you upfront, just bear with me. Tonight, we're going to just be introducing this topic. We have introduced this topic to the city council. We have gotten feedback from the city council. We had planned to bring you actually draft codes tonight, but there's a little bit more work to do yet and our legal team is still working with a few last minute things. And this touches a lot of pieces of our code, so it's very complex. But without any further ado, I'm going to get into it. And tell you about what we're going to talk about tonight and then we'll be looking for your feedback tonight as well. Now, changes to the big changes to the accessory dwelling laws really became effective in 2021, January 1. So our, since that time, our code essentially has been out of date. And now the state code, state code supersedes our code. With SB nine, it's much more recently as Senate Bill nine actually became effective January 1 of this year. And we've had very little time to prepare an ordinance to really address Senate Bill nine. But what we have done is we have put in place an interim ordinance so that we can process Senate Bill nine minor subdivisions and I'll call them lot splits. And the dwellings associated with those. And we'll tell you all about what those are and how those work. We're actually working with a couple of those now and, and our planning commissioner Dennis Schmidt is, is an agent for one of those. So it's been really interesting. So right now, our city code defaults to the state code for ADUs, but we do have this interim ordinance for SB nine. It was kind of adopted as an urgency ordinance that works for that. So we kind of have that partially accommodated, but our city council said, we want it perfected. We want you to, to really look into this and dial it in. And they gave us some feedback and I'll talk about that as well. But in general, both of these new laws really were designed by the state to create more affordable housing, reduce the barriers, streamline approval, expand capacity for smaller infill dwellings on existing properties. So I think, you know, you'll see a lot of these regulations here tonight and we'll start talking about sizes. So keep that mindset. Everything here really is for creating these small affordable units. It's not designed to create big new housing opportunities, but to really put accessory units on existing properties. And really take advantage of, of the existing property that's there. Where, you know, we can accommodate those, those improvements where we can provide services to them. So this, this is for the public as well and for the commission. What is an accessory dwelling unit? They come in all different forms. Sometimes they're completely invisible and they're totally within a house. They're internal. And you won't notice any difference. Sometimes they're in addition to the back of a house or the front of a house or a side of a house and they're attached or on top of the house. And sometimes they're completely detached as their own unit. There's two different types of accessory units now. There's secondary units, which will, really it's called accessory dwellings. But there's a detached accessory unit and then there's a junior accessory dwelling, which is actually a much smaller unit. That's supposed to be entirely within an existing residence or an existing attached garage on the residence. Now Senate Bill nine, although related, is a whole different thing. It essentially was designed to allow for these new lot splits now, which don't have a lot of size regulations to them. So it allows an existing lot to be split roughly in half. As long as it can meet certain criteria. And the main thing is that it's within this area called the urbanized zone that's established by the US Census Bureau. It also, even without splitting the lot, allows one to build what's called these urban dwelling units, which are similar to an accessory dwelling unit. But there are some differences and I'll point those out tonight. And primarily, the differences are with an urban dwelling unit, you still need to pay the full development impact fees. And there's still improvements associated with it. And it can actually act as what we call a primary unit, even though there's size restrictions to it and some other design parameters to it. And it's still designed to be, in terms of how the state thinks of it, to be this smaller affordable unit. In the end, it's very interesting. I mean, and I'll show you these scenarios that I've got up on the screen here. SB nine is really designed to put four units in a space where there was once just one single family dwelling. So it kind of makes a lot of work for us when we think of writing a general plan and writing a zoning regulations and writing a zoning map and assuming so much growth in a community. And then suddenly the state says, well, you need to assume about double or triple the amount of growth you once assumed. It really hits us hard in terms of long-term planning, in terms of infrastructure planning, in terms of fire resources and other natural resources and historic preservation, all those things. We'll touch on all of those things. But let's focus on this graphic for a moment because it's really confusing. And in fact, a lot of cities and a lot of attorneys are still trying to figure out the situations. But the graphic at the top, essentially, you know, if you were not going to split your lot under Senate Bill nine. And let's assume you've got this existing house on your property, which for this case we'll call a primary dwelling or PD. So let's look at that graphic at the top left. I could come into the city and say, I want to also build an ADU on my property. So you can do that. And then you could say, I also want to do this additional SB nine unit, this primary dwelling unit. And within my existing house, I want to do a junior etc. dwelling unit. So there you go. There's four units in one particular style. And those other two images at the top right show different ways that could happen. A primary dwelling unit, a new SB nine unit. And then an accessory unit for each of those units. So that the new primary dwelling or urban dwelling could have an accessory unit. And then your primary house that existed before that could have that accessory dwelling unit. Or those accessory dwellings could be attached together. So in either of these, all these cases, you see that, that single property suddenly becomes four units on a property. And each of those units does have different limitations and restrictions put in place by the state. But we as a local jurisdiction also have a lot of sort of design control and control for health and safety standards on those particular issues. Now down below, SB nine also allows you to split your lot in half. Regardless of the city's zoning regulations that pertained to lot size. The big catch is it has to be roughly in half. It has to be roughly a 40 or 60% split. And it still has to comply with your subdivision regulations in terms of depth to width ratio and whether you need a frontage section. And, and when you build a structure, there's still fringe improvements required and there's still development impact fees required. But again, it essentially takes that one lot and allows the opportunity for four different units in a variety of different ways. Or it allows you just to sell off that vacant little lot or a lot that has development on it. The catch with SB nine lot splits, it does have this caveat that you've got to occupy the lot, the site, one of those lots for three years from the day of the approval of that map. So that's interesting. And what they're trying to do there is really prevent property speculation of new subdivisions. So in general, this kind of gives you some ideas how SB nines and accessory dwellings work together for multiple units on an existing property. In any case, our code needs an update. What we have right now on the books is called a secondary dwelling ordinance. They're not called secondary dwellings anymore. That was adopted in 2004. It's in Title nine, which is our zoning section of our regulations. But we're also going to trigger updates to various parts in Title nine and various parts of Title 11, which actually regulates subdivisions. Primarily that's going to accommodate the Senate Bill nine. And it's really two separate things. But there's also two separate pieces. There's amendments that we absolutely have to do to comply with the state. And there's a lot of design things that we can consider. And that's what I wanted to focus on tonight. Where can the planning commission weigh in? And what should we do that fits our local community when it comes to objective design standards? And what we see as some of the, the key issues for health and safety. So let's just focus on right now on just accessory dwelling units and we'll get to SB nine a little later. First key point, no minimum lot size. We can only regulate based on health and safety. And we have to allow at least an 850 square foot ADU. So we can't set a limit of 400 or 500. A lot of cities used to have those low limits. Now, if they put two or more bedrooms in that ADU, we've got to allow at least 1,000 square feet. We don't have to allow larger, but we do have to allow at least those sizes. And if they decide to build an ADU that takes up a garage, things like that. There's also some caveats where we can't require replacement on street parking, but we can still require parking per unit. So it's kind of interesting. We do also have to guarantee that we have a shorter review time. And the state also does mandate that for the side and rear setbacks that we have to allow them to come closest four feet, which gives us some, a little bit of an issue because a building code has a minimum setback of five feet. You can go less than that, but what it really does, it, it makes sure that you've got to have fireproof construction when you're less than five feet. So it really dumbs down the design, eliminates windows and openings and overhangs. So that's a little bit problematic, but it's what the state says we have to do. Other key points is that we can't charge impact fees on accessory dwelling units when they're less than 750 square feet. Seven forty-nine or less. Now we can charge impact fees if they're bigger than that. But they have to be sort of commensurate to the scale of the unit compared to the average size of the house. So we already have a fee adopted for ADUs that does just that. So that's already in place. In fact, we're seeing a lot of new ADUs developed in Etatscudero. We get them all the time. A lot of them are below 750 because they don't have to pay those development impact fees. But the ones that are above that, they're still paying much less of impact fees. Important note, there's a lot of projects in Etatscudero that do have CCNRs. Condom mediums have those, some single family developments have them. And a lot of them speak to how their area can develop. Now, the state says that those CCNRs can't eliminate the possibility of doing these ADUs. That's interesting fact. And the state also says that none of these should become vacation rentals. None of them can become vacation rentals. The intent is really to create long-term affordable rental or first, you know, well, these can't be for sale, but long-term rental housing. Now, what we do with the existing ADU stock, the state hasn't spoken on that. We're going to remain silent on that. We know there's a lot of vacation rentals out there in ADUs right now. We're not going to prevent that as a city, but going forward, we're going to have to. And there's nothing also that prevents someone from building an ADU and living in that ADU and renting out their primary house. Code allows for that. State code allows for that as well. Now both ADUs and junior ADUs, key thing is here. The state says that we can use those units to satisfy affordable housing requirements. And we have a quota every year and they say we can use half, our estimated half of our ADUs to meet the moderate category and half of them to meet the low income category. And in fact, we can forecast forward and assume how many we're going to do. And we have those numbers. We'll talk about that. That's really key because it takes a big chunk out of our affordable housing requirements in the city, which is a big deal. Because we've got a big RENA that says that we need, and RENA is our regional housing needs allocation. It says we need to do 800, more than 800 units in the city over the next eight years. So it's a lot. Now, some of the things we're going to talk about tonight are wastewater. And that means, you know, a lot of properties in Etatscudero aren't served by sewer. a lot of properties in Atascadero aren't served by sewer, they're on septic. That is a health and safety issue. Our current city code does have a one acre minimum net on the sites that aren't served by sewer in order to build what we call a secondary dwelling unit. Now government code's really strict, it says you can't do any limitations unless it's related to health and safety. We've done a heck of a lot of analysis, we've spoken to the regional board, we've looked carefully through our local area management plan, which really regulates septic placement on properties. And we have come to the conclusion that we do need, from a regional standpoint, about an acre to accommodate a primary and an accessory unit on a property if you're not served by the city sewer system. And we think of that, when we think of overall density, we have multiple sites that are close to each other. And there's two units on each one acre site. There's regional implications to the groundwater basin and we have to look at that bigger picture. So that we don't end up with oversaturation of nitrates, especially in areas where we're closer to the river. Where we have really good percolation, River Gardens is an example where that's that neighborhood is still on septic and a lot of smaller lots. And that's where we're long-term, we're going to have a health and safety issue if we cram a whole bunch of units in there that aren't served by sewer. And we start getting into, you know, potential, potential issue. So a lot of analysis has been done there and we can demonstrate that there is definitely a relationship there. And that we do need to limit the properties that aren't served by sewer. Another big one, fire hazards and road access, we have a lot of limited road access on the west side of Atascadero. And we have big areas that are in what we call our wooey, our wildland urban interface zone, I'll show you a map of that. And it's those properties that are in those well, urban interface zones that actually don't have the second ways out that we're really concerned about. This map on the screen here, the areas that are essentially shadowed in green are what are essentially our wildland urban interface zone. Areas in red, there are very high fire severity zones, that's also within that. But what I want to point out to you is these areas that just have these one-way out roads, in fact, I live in one of those neighborhoods, it's kind of on your way to three bridges out there by Bronco Heights, that area, that neighborhood, long stretch of road with one way out, we've got several of them up high on the west side as well. And so our code looks at those areas and says, it's not safe to add additional density in those zones. You're in wildland urban interface with only one way out. And our general plan designated these areas to be very low density with two and a half acre minimum lot size, up to ten acre minimum lot size. Because of the reasons that we don't have wastewater service, we've got very narrow windy roads. We have very limited access and we're in an extremely dangerous area, especially as we progress forward in the future with prolonged drought. So that's a significant issue, one we can hang our hat on for health and safety. And so we'll bring that up again with SB nine. Now, can't require owner occupancy in ADUs that are, that are built within this period and not until, for some reason, they chose twenty twenty-five, don't know why, that's in the state code. And again, vacation rentals, can't allow them in the ADUs, you can't do it in your primary house. Size matters, now our current code allows ADUs to be at the twelve hundred square feet regardless of lot size or zoning. We do want to dial that in, the new government code does allow cities to regulate. And as long as we have the eight fifty and a thousand. And it's key to focus on that, I know a lot of folks have asked for larger ADUs in the past, every ADU we saw was twelve hundred square feet. But as we now realize that a lot of these sites can do multiple accessory types of units. And that the overall intent is affordable housing and then we can count these guys for our regional housing needs for affordable housing. We need to be focusing on these units being smaller units. We need to have them affordable by design. And they need to be, you know, on sites that aren't going to impact the neighborhood and and be creating shade, shadow and overlook on other people's properties, so size is critical. And having these things maintain their affordability by design is critical. Parking estate really just says you need to be flexible. You need to only, you know, require one space per ADU. And there's a strange caveat of no replacement parking if the ADUs built within existing parking spaces of a garage or carport. And they allow tandem, they allow it in setbacks, it's really safety that we've got to focus on. And then there's a quick review timeline that we have to deny or approve within sixty days. Unless we can reach a different agreement and, you know, they have delays on their end, for example. Real quick on junior ADUs, they're now permitted. They have to be inside the house though, so someone could convert their master bedroom to an ADU out of kitchen to it, someone could convert their attached garage. Now, in the junior ADU situation, the property does have to be owner occupied. And the maximum size of those is only five hundred square feet. I think I mentioned this earlier, the four-foot setback. But there is a height limit for that and it's only sixteen feet. The street yard, which is the distance between the new structure and the actual property line at the street does need to remain at twenty-five feet, if you're on a corner. We do have a reduced side on a corner, which is ten feet from the street yard. We do need to redefine that because our street yard definition's a bit messy and it actually calls it a side. And it's not really a side, it's really a street yards, we need to worry about that because the state might view that differently. Now, if there is a CCR, CCNRs in a single-family neighborhood, they can't be written to prohibit these. That same caveat doesn't apply to multifamily for some reason, so if there's multifamily zoning and they've got a planned development. Then essentially it does appear that those CCNRs could block ADUs in those particular areas. We already took action on the impact fees, I already mentioned that earlier. And I can show you what those look like, just in case you're curious, it's essentially a sliding scale. And it's based on our existing impact fee schedule and it's based on these units that are from seven fifty to a, to, to twelve hundred square feet. And this is the square foot price, it, it does drastically reduce down the price of an ADU development impact fee. When someone finishes out these units as compared to a single-family home, so it's, it's quite a big difference. I can probably give you some of those sample totals, let me see if I can see my whole screen there. Now the total's about, you know, about eleven dollars a square foot if you're in one of the larger lots, so you can do some quick math there and assume that if you had a seven hundred and forty-nine square foot unit at eleven dollars a square foot. That's going to be your cost for the development impact fee portion. Again, I'll touch on that again, ADUs are definitely an important part of affordable housing. We did project two hundred and twenty-five over an eight-year period. And that's very realistic, we're seeing a lot of these and that will really help us justify our our regional housing needs in our community. Now, before I jump into SB nine, I want to take a quick pause here, I know I've been talking a lot. And I just want to stop here for a quick moment and see if you've got any significant questions, but at the end of both of these presentations, I also do have a list of topics that I'm going to be seeking your feedback on. I am going to want to ask you to continue this item tonight to a date certain, which is going to be July the fifth. And when we do that, I want to check in with the team, with the planning commission to see if we're going to have a quorum that day because it is the day after July fourth, there's a lot of vacations that time of year, so we can check in on that date. And we can also have a lot more discussion on that date after we've had time to digest all this material, but on that date or whatever date we choose. We will be coming back to you with these draft regulations in draft ordinance form. And we'll still have definite ability to adjust and talk about things. And then your recommendation would be a recommendation to the city council who would take the final action on several separate changes to the municipal code and I'll go through all those changes a little later, but essentially we'll be touching obviously Title nine, Title eleven and several sections in Title nine, our definitions. Our land use definitions, our property development standards. And creating this whole new code itself to talk about accessory units and a whole new code talking about Senate Bill nine units. So it's a lot, it's a lot of work and I've already given you a lot of information. So when we talk about Senate Bill nine, it'll be a little simpler because you've already had some of the ADU discussion, but it has its own unique nuances as well. But let me pause for just a moment because I've been talking non-stop. So Jeff, if you wanted to, let me know if you want to continue this or if you'd like to start with some, some quick questions.
Um, yeah, quick questions, anybody have any questions for?
Okay, I wrote them down so I wouldn't forget them. So the CCNRs moving forward cannot restrict ADUs, what about CCNRs that are currently in place in our city?
If someone has CCNRs currently in place that speaks against doing accessory units and they're in a single-family zone, they won't need to be amended. It's simply that that portion of those CCNRs will it be invalid, yeah.
So like for the lakes, for example, they would be able to build ADUs in that neighborhood now? Okay, have we seen any there?
That's a good question, I don't know if Kelly or Mariah are on, if they've seen any in the lakes, I don't see exactly where they all are and they might have a better pulse of where we're seeing them.
Yeah, Mariah can jump in if she feels differently, but I don't believe we've seen any in the lakes.
Okay, that was just a total curiosity question. How, how does the city enforce or will, how will the city enforce the vacation rentals? Vacation rental part?
Well, with each new ADU we approve, we are going to have to put a covenant on those properties to prohibit that. But essentially the state code already does it, our new code will do it. And since the rental of vacation rentals requires a business license, they're required to come into the city. They advertise either through VRBO or Airbnb or all one of these other sites. So it's pretty easy to follow up with that. And we have a lot of vacation rentals now coming in every day, all kinds of properties, so we would catch that through our team.
Okay, do we currently have a limit on vacation rentals?
We don't, City of Paso does, other cities do, we have no limit. We love vacation rentals.
Is that something that we will be talking about? In this or the master plan or anything like that?
No, and I say no quite firmly because the city council hasn't given us direction to talk about that yet. If that falls on their radar or on their action plan and they want us to do that, certainly we will. They haven't asked us and so that would need to come from our council to say, hey, you guys need to start checking this out. I'll tell you right now though, since Paso has reached his capacity, we are seeing a lot of vacation rental requests, we're getting a lot of them. We're starting to get a couple of complaints, neighborhood complaints about, hey, my next door neighbor's got a vacation rental now and it's a different person every week and there's a party and there's something going on and it's noisy. And it could be a concern and we could start losing some of our housing stock from it, but right now it hasn't risen to the surface to be a, a big enough concern in our community yet.
But I think that's, I know this is kind of off topic, but I think that if it's not a concern yet, now's the time to get on it before it becomes a concern, so I will contact you about some information about that later. Okay, so with the splitting of the lots, if let's say somebody has like a three acre lot and they split it in half and they sell that other lot. Can that, can the buyer of the other lot split it again?
No, absolutely not, and in fact, it would have a covenant recorded on it that would preclude future lot splits. Yeah, unless those lot splits are consistent with the city zoning, they would be limited, number one. And number two, they would also have a recorded document on there that says what they can and can't do with that property in accordance with Senate Bill nine and in accordance with our code that we adopt that limits what they can build on that property, so it's not going to be like a regular property where they can do anything they want, it's going to have limitations on it.
Okay, and we, we kind of talked about this earlier, but like where I am now, it's a minimum lot of two point five acres. If that was to change in the future, like, okay, so I split it in half, I have two one and a half acre lots under SB nine. If the zoning was to change in the future to something smaller, would they then be able to split the lot? Is that kind of what you're saying?
Yeah, they, exactly, and we'll talk about SB nine more, you're supposed to be talking about ADU stuff, remember?
Oh, I'm sorry, I wrote down my questions, okay, and then on the slide where you put one acre net versus one acre gross, can you?
What's the difference?
Yes, and I feel like you might have said something, but I totally missed it.
Right over it, so here's the deal. Net is basically just your property lines, right, whereas gross can actually be your property lines plus part of the street right away that might be recorded on your property, a lot of the streets in Atascadero are actually easements over the top of properties. And there's easements on your properties and you can include those in a gross calculation to include a portion of those easements and rights of waste that might be over your property. So it actually enlarges your potential property when you go gross. And it shrinks it if you include net, net would mean just inside your property exclusive of, you know, easements and everything else, so.
So like, I live on a flag lot now, so my neighbor, I have an easement on his property for my driveway. So if we calculated his gross, it would include the part that's for the driveway. I have my easement over, and would I count the easement in my?
No, you wouldn't get it because it's not his property.
Uh, okay, that's all my questions.
Sorry, looking to make an ADU?
Let's not go there.
I have a question for Phil, maybe, this is a, yeah, thanks, thanks, sure. I wanted to see, and maybe these numbers aren't right now available, but what is in the last year or so, I guess? The, the rate at which people are wanting ADUs that are seven fifty or under?
What's the rate, how many have we built?
Right, like in the last year or like, because you were saying, oh, a lot of a lot of people quote unquote are doing them because there, there's no impact fee, so I'm just curious, like what is?
I can give you a rough estimate, but I don't, I don't have the exact data for you, in fact, that's a good question, when I come back to you on this topic, I'm going to bring you the actual data of what we've seen, Kelly, you have a rough estimate for me at all?
I like that word.
I don't at this point, but I do know prior to the twenty twenty new state law for development impact fee waiver. Most of our ADUs were twelve hundred square feet. And since that law, we're seeing a lot of four hundred square foot units, seven hundred and forty-nine square foot units. So I don't know the number, but I would say, you know, at least a solid, you know, quarter to a third are smaller units now than they were before.
I've seen a lot of them all around town, I know there's been quite a few, but we'll get you another, yeah.
It just like, just looking at a general scope of, and I know we're still talking about Senate Bill nine. But it's like our city is quote unquote the poorest city in the county and so we do things like you know, measure D and things like that to increase our basically fees that we can incur, that we can have utilities and make sure the city's okay and our community's okay. So it's like we need some of those impact fees, so I get the tension there of let alone the compliance now standards that are going to be added to this and a very lean staff, so I guess that's what I'm thinking about going forward on. How much do we try to get away from seven fifty or under? Even though it can count for a lot more housing, so.
Yeah, it's tough. It's not, there's not a lot we can do when the state gives us that, you know, they say, here you go. It's challenging, yeah, we've got, how are we going to make ends meet if we get a whole bunch of these new units and new impacts on our streets and our fire department, our police department? And all of our services and utilities, it's a challenge, I don't know where this is going to go long-term.
Oh, Victoria cut out there.
Oh, I guess my, well, my last thing, which again, further it might not be in this report, but around public works probably and water, the urban dwelling units have to be hooked up to sewer, right, they can't be with septic?
Well, in our interim code, that's the case, in our proposed code. Uh, we will actually be allowing some that aren't hooked up to sewer, or that's an option, we can talk about that. How, how we deem that to be health and safety, how, how that fits in with health and safety standards. Now, a big thing on SB nine, when I start talking about that, they're only going to be allowed in this urbanized area and a lot of our so a lot of our unsued properties are outside that urbanized area, so it's going to cut out most of those anyway. So it's a whole different law.
Would there be, because I wasn't sure, it could have been in here and I just overlooked it, but is there any look at, or did city council suggest in their comments to you all about any incentives for perhaps things like gray water or if they added permits and, and plans for that, would there be any incentives for them?
Um, so basically we are talking about some various options that would say that Um, so basically we are talking about some various options that would say that even if you're not on a property that has sewer and you're on a little bit smaller of a lot size, that you could hire an engineer and you could do um uh different, you know, an engineered system, pretreatment and beat all these different qualifications and still be able to do these units. But in terms of having gray water and saving water and all those kinds of things, that hasn't come up. The real issue is nitrogen loading in property at high density. And we've seen other communities that have gone to those extents like Los Osos, where it becomes a true disaster with high density and all septic. Um, because you've got groundwater contamination issues. That's what we're concerned about.
Now, Phil, I assume that
Okay, and, and and then the creeks.
Sound like there's a little bit of a delay there, Victoria, sorry.
Sorry, um, I think that I will spare, yes, my last thing was just around black water. So that seems to be the primary concern unless about water usage. It's about nitrate load. Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, thanks.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna interrupt here. So Phil, um, I assume that if you build these AD units that, you know, they're not SB nine units, but just ADUs that the county reassesses your property?
Yes.
So your taxes, your property taxes increase.
Yeah.
So there is some benefit to the city because the increase of property taxes.
Yeah, they will have the ability to reassess based on new improvements to your property. And if assessor does that, if you build a garage or accessory structure, anytime you do that, it is an improvement to your tax base.
Right. Okay. Now, you ju- you just mentioned something about the, the city's considering or staff is considering whether or not even on a smaller lot, if an engineered septic system were brought in.
The council wants us to look at parameters where even if someone had well under an acre, is there a way for them to expand their system in a way that they can still fit an ADU on there? Let's say that all the neighbors around them have larger lots and it's not going to be a nitrogen loading issue and they can demonstrate they can accommodate their system. Can that happen? And so we're designing an exception system where that could happen.
Okay, because that something like that impacts my property because I'm at point eight acres. And all my neighbors are about that size or maybe a little bigger.
Yeah.
But sewer is, you know, a thousand feet down the road, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay, thank you. Any other questions for Phil? Oh, Randy?
So with the addition of ADUs, um, are they going to have to have utilities?
They don't have to have all separate utilities. They can use the same water meter. You can use same utilities. You can have separate utilities and you can sub meter. Um, so there is options.
Yeah, because the, the reason I ask is I know we have kind of water restrictions coming down the pike and the state was looking at. We have to find a way to meter what is like inside internal use and what is kind of like outdoor watering. So I know they were trying to figure that out, but if someone's adding, you know, extra ADUs and they're under the same system, that fifty gallons a day per person like that go out the window real quick.
Yeah.
And then um the other reason I, I also am asking is uh, I know in the natural gas uh facilities, anything that has a newer service, a lot of them have these things called excess flow valves. And what that means is if you hit the line and it goes open, there's a little ball inside that line that will stop flow of gas. Well, if you get too much of a BTU load on one of those, you can actually trip those. And so you'll have like water heater pilots going out and, and issues like that. So that was just those, I kind of can see like a little bit of writing on the wall. Like I know people are, they don't want to pay that seven hundred and fifty uh and above. But I, I can see kind of people putting themselves in a bad situation with the water limitations and, and just our grid how it is.
Could happen, sure. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Phil. Well, I guess we're ready for SB nine.
All right, let's go through this real quick and then perhaps um with a couple more questions, we can get out to public comment and we'll go there. So Senate Bill nine um really is, is two different pieces to it. It's um designed so that you could either split your lot, sell off a portion of your property for the intent of doing these urban dwelling units and maybe an accessory dwelling unit. Um, or you can do urban dwellings on your property, but it feels like there's not a whole lot of demand to do an urban dwelling on your property without a lot split. Because you can do accessory dwelling units and the accessory dwellings are essentially for the most part cheaper um because of the, the impact fee issue and the lack of doing the improvements. Whereas an SB nine unit is going to trigger full fees, does require improvements to the property. Um, and it's like building a regular house, but it's going to have size restrictions to it. So I think what we're going to probably be seeing is more of the lot split side of SB nine, even though SB nine allows you to do urban dwelling units without a lot split. And in fact, we've already seen a couple of applications for lot splits. We're working on those now. Now, the important thing here is where does it apply? That big red boundary is what the census identifies as the urbanized area. Uh, anyone that touches that boundary, even if their whole parcel's not in it, can use SB nine. And the other caveat is only for single family residential zones, not for commercial zones where mixed uses allowed, not for a multi-family zone where we have apartments and a lot of our stuff along L community realities. Only single family residential and only in that urbanized area. So it's not everywhere in the city, but it's a big chunk of the city. So similar to the map I showed you earlier, here's some different scenarios. Um, someone could do a new, what they call it, you know, urban dwelling unit. And they can still do an ADU and a JDU on their house. Um, or they could um do a whole new duplex. You know, that's what SB nines really are. It's a duplex ordinance. Um, and then have an ADU on that property. Um, or they can split the lot and do a new duplex of these urban dwelling units on that new property. So there's all these different scenarios that can occur and it's, it's kind of perplexing. It's kind of confusing to look at. Okay, you can combine your existing house with an urban dwelling unit with an accessory unit. And all these different combinations of these four units. And there's probably still a couple unanswered questions about, you know, how all this works. If you, you know, I don't think we've crossed the bridge yet. If you have an entirely vacant lot and you split it with urban lot split, can you do a full size home? Can we regulate that? Or does everything have to be SB nine? Um, so there's a couple of things that we're still trying to work through. And like ADUs, we have some areas of concern and we need to look closely at. Areas that don't have sewer, uh, the secondary access issue in the, in these fire hazard zones, areas that have significant environmental issues such as slopes and creeks, wetlands, archaeological resources or historic properties for that matter. And that's one, the historic property is one where the state says you can uh preclude SB nine on a historic site. For example, if we have a substantial colony home on a small site, do we want to see that property cut up with units all built around it or on it or split the house itself without, you know, that house being changed? So that's something strong to consider. Now, I will tell you that the city of Atascadero does not have a historic preservation ordinance. We don't have historic designations for our colony homes, but that is something that our council has directed us to do as part of this exercise is to create a historic list for our colony homes. We have a list already. It's just not adopted. In fact, we have general plan policy that speaks very strongly about adopting um an ordinance. So it's just a matter of time now before we do that. And I think that's critical going forward as we see more and more of these state policies that really can impact, you know, some of our, our heritage sites. So this is kind of a rough list of um these potentially eligible parcels in the city that are in that urbanized zone that are single family that, you know, at this time, when we made this map, these parcels were also locations that had access to sewer. Now, if we go and extend this to properties that don't have sewer, this number of properties will grow quite a bit. So as I mentioned, there's the two pieces. There's the urban lot split. That's a new lot split created under SB nine by an owner of a single family parcel lot. And each of those lots can contain new units, the two new units. Then there's just the urban dwelling unit that you can build on an urban lot split or build without an urban lot split. And um and there's some different caveats along with that. So it's interesting. Again, single family zoning only. You've got to, do you have three year occupancy on just the lot splits? It should be roughly fifty fifty split. The state says you can go as small as forty percent of the, of the parent lot and sixty percent up. Um, you can't do subsequent ones. That was Tori Keen's question. Uh, you can't do the vacation rentals again on these properties. And when we did the interim ordinance, we said that they had to be served by sewer. And that's something that we can, we can go dial further with that and have these match what we're proposing with our accessory dwelling units, which is essentially that one acre size um for two units or more. Um, and so we can talk about that and, but I think having these two ordinances close together is key because people get confused if you have one different, you know, strongly different than the other. The other thing we can also do is what's called these objective standards. Um, and it really comes down to, there's two different areas. There's objective standards for, for health and safety that um our city building official can call out. And then there's objective design standards, which I'll show you on the next page as well. So we can have maximum size standards as long as they're not less than eight hundred square foot. Um, we can prohibit these on these sensitive sites, um historic sites, and we can prohibit them in areas where it's not safe. And we can also require that they share driveways, uh, streets. But then we can also adopt what we call these objective design standards. And we can do things like covered front porches, minimum yards and open space, a reduced footprint of the second floor to create articulation, um, making sure they have dedicated storage and laundry and making sure that there's a maximum amount of area they cover on the property. And that's really about it. I know it's a lot to digest, so I wanted to kind of break this into two pieces for tonight and break this into pieces and come back to it a later date with the actual ordinance language after you provide some directions tonight and after we hear some public feedback. Um, I do want to give, like what I'll leave you with is um this discussion. I've got a few pages of this discussion we can go through. I don't want to be here all night. Um, and so what we can do is um have some more questions on the SB nine portion. We can get into the sort of direction items real quick. But before we get into that direction items, I think it'd be a good idea to open up the public comment after you've um have your questions answered. And then we can decide um on pushing this forward to a date certain and see if we're going to get a quorum for July fifth, because that's our next target date in order to get to the city council at a reasonable time. And we'd like to be able to have these ordinances completed by um September or October this year by the city council. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Um, any commissioners questions for Phil regarding the SB nine stuff?
Getting tired like I am, that's okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm kind of worried down a bit.
Getting close to nine o'clock. So I'll go ahead and open this up for public comment. Um, if you'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand and we will get to you. Please state your name for the record and also limit your time to three minutes. Appreciate it. We'll start with Sierra.
Hi, Sierra Steele again. Um, I hung around for the rest of the meeting. Um, I just want to comment on the affordability and um price per square foot. Um, I don't know if the prices are set, but I would be comfortable with the city actually increasing those for the ADUs as there are so many programs right now where the federal government is giving grants and other things to refund the homeowner who's adding the ADU for any of these development fees with local cities and ordinance.
Do you have any other comments, Sierra?
Um, now I just
Okay.
Sounds like a good plan moving forward. I just know that the city does have the opportunity to um, it's still being affordable for people to build these in their urban areas here in Atascadero and still be able to increase the city's fees.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Uh, Greg, we'll move to you. If you want to unmute yourself?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for having this meeting. It was a real informative. Um, so my, I, I'm very comfortable with the SB nine direction. Uh, the regulations from the state and the regulations that you guys are looking at um adopting. The only thing I've come up with uh on the SB nine, let's say, design standards or restrictions is the twenty five foot setback requirement. I'm running into a problem with that because what you're doing is taking a single family residential lot, now think our multifamily have fifteen foot setback. We're doing twenty five foot uh on single family and we're keeping that standard, yet we have a four foot rear setback. I think a five foot side setback. So what it's doing is, and I, I don't have anything against front yards, but when you have small houses, privacy is, you know, number one, you want to have a nice yard. Um, so designing a project, if we could look at some flexibility in that front setback. And I'm not doing it to get more units. I've, we've already got the number of units. I'm saying we can get more interior open space for private use. So that's, that's my um suggestion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. And we'll go ahead and move to Jeff Skinner.
Yeah, thank you for taking my comments. Um, I'm just kind of curious about the limitation on the square footage of the SB nine unit. Uh, I believe it's eight hundred square feet and that includes garage space and storage. Um, my question would be, is there any uh leaning towards then allowing some sort of garage space in an SB nine split? It seems to me also that the square footage is limiting what we can do if we can put a twelve hundred square foot ADU on there. I, I don't understand why we couldn't do that also with SB nine. Uh, and my other question would be in terms of expediting a lot split, is there going to be an accelerated schedule in that matter? Um, currently I was told it takes about a year to split a lot. I didn't know if that was going to change. That's it. Thank you.
But do we have any other questions or comments from attendees? Uh, we'll go with Tim.
Taking my comments. Um, just to be clear, you've kind of mentioned it, I believe, but I've investigated some of these um highly engineered um aerobic septic systems that can put almost zero nitrates. Is, is that something you guys are maybe looking to accept if something can be found to be that conservative? Uh, and potentially put those in your um acceptable standards. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Uh, do we have any other? Anybody else that would like to make a comment? Okay, if not, we will go ahead and close the public comment portion and we'll bring it back. And Phil, do you want to answer some of those questions separate from?
Yes, I'll start with um Greg's comment on the reduced front yard setback. Uh, that is something that's purely discretionary up to the city. It's up to the planning commission and city council. I, I will add that the state, that's one of the few things the state left cities with is that we, they didn't meddle with that and they gave us the liberty to keep our setbacks in the front yard. Right now, we do have fifteen foot setbacks established in the multifamily zones, twenty uh five in single family zones. And then if they're on a corner lot, it's twenty five and ten on the corner side. Um, the important things to consider there are site distance, just view shed down a street, obviously, and that front yard appearance. And then the idea of, you know, this, I think what the state was probably thinking when they let us have that is the whole view shed of a front of a house changing when we have these single family homes and you've got that nice approach and then someone having a small ADU right in front of that, it just really changes the architectural appearance of properties and um oftentimes it's where your utilities are and it's where your um driveway access is, so. There's a lot of things to consider there. It's also where our parking areas are and we pull into the front of a house. So it's um, it's an interesting situation. And um definitely proceed with caution on that one. Um, in terms of the other comment there about timeframe and size, the proposal isn't to include a, a size limit of eight hundred square feet and including the garage. In fact, what we'd like to see with both the SB nine and ADU units is really to have a matching ordinance that basically says that, you know, eight hundred foot max for a one bedroom, larger up to a thousand for a two. Um, and that there can be garage space outside of that. And if the garage is detached, let's say you had a detached garage. Outside of that, and if the garage is detached, let's say you had a detached garage, there's no limit to that size other than. The size limits that we have in our code for accessory structures uh, to be, you know, less than the size of the primary house. But if it's attached to that accessory structure, we are proposing. Uh, a two hundred and fifty square foot max garage. That's basically a single car garage and a half. Attached to an ADU and that wouldn't count towards your square footage of your ADU. And that if it's built above it in an ADU uh, scenario, that it could be larger and that, and that way we would encourage that sort of carriage house approach. With a four hundred and fifty square foot full-size garage and storage with an ADU over it, that could be the maximum size as well. So we did, we have actually. Thought about those issues and didn't want to be too restrictive on those particular issues. And then the timeframe, these SB nine loss splits, we've already done a couple of them and they come in. It's literally just a couple of weeks for us to look at, okay, does it meet the requirements? Then they can move straight into recordingation. We do have to record a couple of deed restrictions on there. And they can head into recordingation and, and as fast as their surveyor can pull together a map. We can get that thing on its way. There's not much for us to look at as long as they meet the requirements of. Their access and the slope and demonstrate that they're not on a steep cliff with it, without a building site. And they're not covering up utilities and they've got access to utilities and. And septic or sewer and all those other things. It's pretty quick to review that. So it's not a year. In fact, I can't think of any subdivisions that have been a year unless the surveyors taking their time producing the map or unless there's. Uh, multiple lots included with a lot of improvements to get completed, but these are different and the improvements don't actually have to get completed. For frontage improvements until the units are actually being built. So we don't require a recordingation of map. With these SB nine units. So it's a very quick process. And then the last question was about aerobics, uh, septic systems. The council has asked us to look at options that could allow for ADUs on a smaller site. Should they have a system that has what's called pre-treatment? Should they have larger lots, lots around them, a couple of different scenarios, but on a site. Uh, or a septic system that has pre-treatment, there's a lot of engineering costs and there's also annual fees. Um, of maintenance and annual fees to reach lower water. So there's a lot of considerations there. They're not cheap to build. They're not cheap to maintain. And it's a constant situation. So um, we don't know that we'll get a lot of interest in doing that on these smaller sites if they have to have pre-treatment. Um, in that, but we're looking at all the options that we can bring back to you. So we have flexibility in the end.
Great, thank you. Okay.
Now, so if you'd like to go through some of the um. Directional items, I can do that.
Yeah, let's do that.
So first of all, what I have is, let me see, I've got a couple of pages. Oh geez, it's a lot here. First of all, I've got the ADU stuff. There's the size limitations. Um, and a council also said. In some cases, we would like to see a larger ADU for properties that are of a certain size. And could you put in some thresholds? And we thought of. You know, maybe that size threshold is. An acre or more, one point five acres if the ADU is. Respected to the size of the primary residence. That's one particular topic. Um, and then there's the discussion about garages. And if a garage is attached. You know, should the ADU have a certain size limitation, our recommendation, I think that's very similar to the comment we just got would be that garage would be. No larger than two hundred and fifty square feet or the entire structure would be twelve fifty. So there's a few things there to weigh in on. You can give us some general direction on. Those are some of the things that we have flexibility on and we also have flexibility on. Doing what we call objective design standards. Then there's discussion that we just also had about wastewater. And should we explore these properties that are between three quarters and one acre that are surrounded by larger parcels? Or can we, or should we just say that someone, if someone can demonstrate onsite wastewater system operation? With either pre-treatment or an expansion area within a certain size property, should we allow that? Council asks us to look at that. I do want to mention that there are some other um, changes that are hidden in the code that we'll need to bring you. To update the definition for multifamily. Update the definition for multifamily project. We can get into that next time we have discussion. Uh, but essentially this is just a list of these different definitions that we have to update. So that we have consistency with what the state is doing and so we can speak to all these different scenarios. And then we can get into SB nine, but I'm going to stop right there. And just ask for your feedback on just the ADU portion right now. And then we can jump over to the SB nine and there's a couple of topics there as well.
Any comments from? Any commissioners on? These items? I, I, I feel really comfortable with, with the sizing of. Of what you, what you've got there.
Is the sizing because we don't want them as big as a primary residence?
Again, everything kind of points back to, we want to keep these projects affordable. We want to keep them affordable by design so that they're not renting for rates that are above the moderate rate. And also we want to respect neighborhood compatibility. When we think of. Not only are we going to be seeing these ADUs on a property, we might also be seeing a junior ADU. And an urban dwelling unit and how much can fit on these properties without really changing neighborhood character and impacting the neighborhood. A twelve hundred square foot house is, is a regular three-bedroom house. It may not, not be the biggest house in the world, but it's a good sized house. So when we have these limits, we say. Hey, this, the intent of this whole thing is to have accessory little units that are for Y design. So everything points back to that. That's why I keep stressing that.
Okay, that makes sense. And then, so for an ADU, it has to be like, because I, I was reviewing the definitions we currently have. So an ADU, does that mean that it includes a full kitchen?
Yes, ADUs have to have a full kitchen.
Okay, but they do not have to include laundry?
Laundry's a luxury.
I don't even know how to respond to that. Um.
No, they don't have to actually have laundry. I mean, they should, but I don't think there's anything in state law that says you have to do it. I mean. As long as you've got a sink and a clothesline, you're good, right?
Says the man who's never done laundry. I'm kidding. I'm totally kidding. I mean, I get it. Like, we have laundromats for a reason, right? Like, there's a reason why the laundromats are in town. Yeah. But is that something that we could require that ADUs have to have laundry?
You probably can. I don't think there's anything in the state code that says that you can't require that. So those are the kind of things we probably do have room with. So if you want to say that. You need to have a space for a washer and dryer. Now, whether they actually have a working washer and dryer in there, we can't mandate that. But that they have a location suitable for the installation of a washer and dryer, that's a perfectly reasonable. Condition to put on these, just like we need, we can say that you need to have space for X square footage of storage. You need to have space for parking. We can. Require that they have space for these things and that they're built into these units.
Speaking of storage, I know that we've had discussions in previous projects about storage. Is there like a number that like you go for? For storage, like a percentage?
There is. In fact, we already have standards that are established in our zoning code for multifamily apartment projects. That require a certain amount of storage. Um. We also typically put that into our plan developments. I don't know that we have that level of detail. Um, for you today, but. That certainly is something that we can put into this and um. I'm not sure if our stock plans have that built into them, but I think a couple of them do.
Because I feel like essentially what we're doing is we're taking a single family lot and we're turning in, into potentially a multifamily lot. I mean, if, if they're going to rent it out, you're going to have. You know, whether it's a relative or not, it's going to be another family living there. And so, you know. I think that these kinds of things are really important. Um, and.
Yes, exactly. That's why we have. Exactly.
And we want high-quality structures so that. You know, we don't end up with empty sheds in backyards. So, so I would say, like, I would like to know what the multifamily. Requirement is for storage space and I think probably something similar to that required in an ADU might be good. Um, and also uh, require space for laundry. Um, even if it's a stackable system, you know, I mean, that I think would be totally reasonable. But I think that. Particularly for, if these are going to be low and moderate income people, you know. They, they may not have the means to schlep all their stuff to a laundromat or pay for that. So um. I think, I think that would be a good requirement, particularly if we're allowing up to eight hundred square feet for a bedroom unit. You also wanted us to talk about garages, right?
That's probably an important topic and I think where staff is going with that, um, detached garages. It's difficult to get into regulating that, but if something's actually attached to an ADU, the idea is to not have this massive new structure on a property. That's really supposed to be an accessory unit. And we've had a lot of requests in the past for someone wanting to build, for example, uh, two thousand or three thousand square foot garage. With a workshop and a bathroom and then you get an ADU scabbed on the side of it. Before you know it, you've got a three thousand square foot structure. Part of it's habitable, part of it's not, part of it's a gray area. And it gets really messy and we have a lot of requests like that. But the intent here again is to have these affordable units. They can be attached to garages. They could be above garages. They could be in garages. And you can have a detached garage on that property, but really I think there should be some dialing in of, okay, these are intended to be these separate. Long-term rentals or long-term residents that are in these affordable categories. Sure, they should have storage. Sure, they should have covered parking. But there should be limits to that so that it doesn't become something that is. Much larger than what we expect for what the intent of the state code is.
So we would want to put a limit on the size of the garage.
If it's attached to the ADU.
If it's attached to the ADU. And how much is a car and a half, you said?
So right now, I mean, basically the average single car garage. Is going to be ten feet wide by twenty feet deep, which is about two hundred square feet. Um, so we're saying that. A, an ADU should not have a garage that's bigger than two hundred and fifty square feet, which is room for a single car and storage. Or it's an open garage. And we're also saying that if an ADU is built above a garage. That the maximum size of that garage should not be greater than four hundred and fifty square feet. The single or a typical two-car garage is actually four hundred square feet. And that's a good size two-car garage that would be um. Twenty by um. Twenty plus the fifty, you'd have extra for storage. It'd be extra depth.
Could.
Now, if someone has an existing house with a garage. They could still build, you know, the ADU in it or above it. But we're talking about a clearly separate new structure where they're building these together.
Right. So. I know that there's not like a requirement for parking spaces, but I'm just thinking if a, if a family with two cars moves in and they only have a single car garage.
They can park outside. There's no requirement to have covered parking, sure.
Okay, so, but do we have to require that there's another, like, there's one parking spot per bedroom kind of thing?
There is not. No, the code says we can only require one space per unit. So really, they park in a driveway, they park on the street. We can't really require much more.
Okay, well then I like, I like, I personally agree with the two hundred and fifty attached or. Four hundred and fifty if it's over top thing. I think that's a good. Ratio. And I'll stop talking so other people can get their comments in.
Randy or Victoria, have any, any comments?
Coffee.
What do you need? You ready? Okay, I just got to finish this.
Okay. Some of the questions that are coming up for me are just around the facade of. If you have a garage unit, you know, what is that going to do to the front? Area of the house. And so what are the design standards going to look like? Is there going to be any screen requirement? Can there be? Do we need to be thinking about that? Or a requirement to actually just do away with any of the. The garage doors, you know? And that be like a standard that we put in so that people aren't just opening up their garage to open up. The view of their entire living room right there and sitting on their couch watching TV.
The idea is, if you, yeah, I mean, the idea that you would have something that's really clearly alongside or. You know, kind of like a carriage house type of thing where it's down below and you've got a stairway going up to the top of the unit. There's so many different design provisions that could occur with that. But that certainly is something the commission could comment on if you wanted to have certain design limitations to where. That garage is cited at a certain distance on the property or has a certain setback to it if it has an attached garage. But typically what we see with those is that it would be um. Well. I guess it could go all sorts of different ways. I shouldn't get. Yeah, it's all, it's so different. And we are doing these stock plans that don't have attached garages to them. So we're really trying to encourage ADUs to not actually have garages or be attached. We're just saying when this does happen, should there be parameters? Most of the ADUs we see are really just, they're either built above garages, in garages. Or they're built just all on their own without a garage at all and they just have a little outdoor parking space. We're seeing a lot of those.
And then I guess, like, I'm thinking about as far as complaints coming in, like, what are the biggest things that we could potentially prevent with some of our? Standards and, you know, I think about people commenting on fire hazards and carbon monoxide and things like that. I mean, I'm sure we have certain standards that are baseline for any dwelling unit.
Those are all going to be inherent to the building code and the fire codes, so that's. Going to be kind of built in and we have to comply with all of those. Um, the biggest thing about complaints that we're concerned, are they going to be concerned about is. Someone's loss of view shed. Someone um, has, you know. Let's say someone has a, just right now, they have a ten-foot deep backyard, you know, and they have a small lot. And right behind that ten-foot yard, someone builds a new. You know, sixteen-foot tall ADU that's four feet away from the property line and they used to have a view back there in sunlight. And we can't speak to that because the state says you're allowed to build as close as four feet. You know, regardless of what's over that property line. Now, they do put a height limitation, that's sixteen foot, that's good. Um, but if that thing is moved one foot further to five foot to comply with our setback standard. You know, it's our typical residential height limit, which is, you know, twenty-five or thirty-five feet in a lot of scenarios, so. Those are probably the areas where we have probably the most concern where we're seeing these units. That are really tight in somebody's backyard and they're right adjacent to their neighbor's property and it really impedes on their neighbors. Sense of privacy or view.
When people apply um, for these ADUs or all of the above that we just talked about. Are there any required notifications that the city is going to have for neighbors?
No, in fact, we cannot have any discretionary review or any notification. It's a straight building permit. That's it. We have to approve it if it meets all of the standards. The only thing we can do is put in place these design standards. And most of them have to do with health and safety. And um, that's why we're doing these. Um, stock plans as well to help guide people towards good design and we'll, we'll give away free stock plans that people can build their ADUs with. But part of that is the fact that, you know, they're designed with a lot of these features already built in.
Well, Phil, it's getting a little late. Is there, what, what can we do? I mean, what, what?
So this is supposed, I know it's getting really late. It's a lot to talk about here. This is supposed to be an introduction. We don't have to make any decisions tonight. I wanted to give sort of a really warm-up to the whole topic. We'll come back to you. Um, we want to continue this to a date certain and we can have this discussion again. And the idea is that I introduce the topics to you. You can think on them. And we'll dedicate our entire hearing to this next time and we'll have just this and no other big development item before it. And we'll talk about the code in every detail at length. Um, so we're kind of just getting general direction. If there's anything that really stands out to you that, oh my gosh, this is a really big deal. Staff, would you look at this? You know, really give us that general direction and the same with SB nine. Um, about the size limitations, about the health and safety standards. And SB nine, we also have this objective design standards where we could put. And SB nine, we also have this objective design standards where we could put in place that all of them have to have covered from porches. We have to have a minimum open space. We have to have dedicated laundry and storage in each unit, um, things like that. So any of these things really stand out to you, uh, you can provide those kind of comments. And what we'd like to do is, is come back to you with a completely developed code. Um, we have a few things we're still working on. And then we can talk about all these again. It's all on the table. Um, just because we proposed, you know, a, a draft code to you and a resolution. Doesn't mean it can't be changed on the fly. And then we, again, get another chance to nail it down even tighter when we get to the city council. So we don't have to get into depth and, and provide definitive direction on each of these things right now tonight. But it'd be great if we could decide on a date and whether we're going to have a quorum for, uh, July the fifth, or whether there needs to be another day.
Okay, so, uh, of the commissioners that are here, will any of you be gone on July fifth? Tori, Tori, Randy?
I will be here.
Right.
We're here.
Get out of the area, but I should be able to do remote.
Thank you, Randy.
Okay, Victoria, will you be here?
Yep.
And so will I. Um, so at least the four of us will be here. And it looks like, um. Dennis will not be able to participate at the next meeting, no matter what. And hopefully. Our other two commissioners can come to that.
Yeah, hopefully we'll have at least a quorum and at least a good, you know, contention of, uh, of input.
Yeah. Well, then, um, can we go ahead and table this into a date, until that date certain meeting of July? Fifth, July the fifth. Let's do, let's do that. And, um. Let's see. Do I need to make a motion to do that?
Yes, yes.
Can I have a motion to move this continuous discussion on date certain of July fifth?
Second.
I say first. You got to make the motion first.
First.
Okay. Everybody want to second that?
I'll second. That's my job tonight is second Randy's motions.
Okay, alright.
Yeah.
I just wanted, I just noticed we had a participant that has her hand up. Did we, um?
We closed a couple of comments, so we'll.
That's right, okay.
We'll go ahead and, uh, they can come back on the next meeting.
Okay.
Make some more comments. So that next meeting will be on July fifth. Uh, and that, can we get a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Hughes. Vice Chairperson King.
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza.
Yes.
Chairperson Van den Eyck.
Yes.
Motion passes four-zero.
Thank you. I'm assuming there are no commissioners' comments or reports. Uh, we've just heard from our director, so he probably doesn't have much more to say. And so then we will adjourn to our next. Now, are we going to have a regular meeting on June twenty-first?
We're actually looking to cancel that, I think.
Yeah, I don't think we have any items ready for that.
Okay, great. Then we will dismiss until our next meeting, which looks like it'll be July fifth. Appreciate everybody sticking around for us.
Alright.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a great night. Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.